Meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held July 17th, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the Council Cottonwood Public Safety Building, 191 South Sixth Street in Cottonwood, Arizona. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Ilinski?
Here.
Councilmember Howery?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Adam Mayer?
Here, thank you. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and if we could call on Superintendent of Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, Barb Yurin, to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a certificate for you, if you would like to come up and get it. On behalf of my colleagues on the council, something for your wall. You're welcome. Thank you for your great citizenship. All right, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I only have one item tonight, and that's that our fire ban was lifted this morning for the City of Cottonwood, and we anticipate that both the Forest Service and the county will be lifting their fire ban tomorrow, obviously due to the moisture weather. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Councilmembers. Nothing? Okay.
Been a rather inactive week for me.
Okay, I'd just like to announce that the council, the city council and the mayor are sponsoring, along with the Verdi Valley Medical Center and FIT Kids, a luau, and I believe that's August 11th, Saturday anyway, the second Saturday of August, and we're going to invite a couple hundred kids and their families to come, and it's part of the council's Let's Move activities with the First Lady, so if you can all join us, that would be great. And I was, I went, I attended a Project Central Alumni Campout, along with Casey Rooney, was there last Saturday up in Williams, and that was lots of fun. So, my report's short tonight. Okay, moving on to the next item then, is the Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, per Arizona Revised Statute 38431-02H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And I don't have any forms, is there anyone who would like to speak to the Call to the Public? Okay, and have you filled out a form? I didn't see one here.
I'm speaking on behalf of Mary Rodriguez.
Okay.
Since she cannot read the letters, she has a couple of items. By the way, my name is Gary LaMaster.
Thank you.
And Mary asked me to read these for her. There is an issue I would like to discuss with the council. While NEIPTA was in charge of the CATS system, CAT system, there was another grant to help low-income riders of the route system, bus stop system. That grant was called the NECOG Black Grant. With this grant, low-income route riders were given a 50% fee reduction. Just prior to the transition from NEIPTA to Cottonwood, NEIPTA still had $5,000 of unused grant money. NEIPTA elected to give this grant money to Catholic Social Services of Cottonwood. Now, low-income riders, instead of purchasing a 20-ride pass at 50% off, must go to Catholic Social Services office weekly to request passes. The limit is two passes per week, and the criteria is that the passes must be used for doctor's appointments, to look for work, or to go to work only. Thus, not only limiting their use, but making them use the three, or the two passes to get Catholic services and return home. Because the Black Grant is no longer in effect, low-income passengers for the route system must pay full price, even though they qualify for a reduced rate. Please take a moment to reestablish the Black Grant to help our low-income citizens. Thank you for your time. That's one letter. At this time, I would like to speak on one of the reasons I feel there are major funding problems in the transportation provided, not only by the City of Cottonwood, but in the entire state. The Arizona Lottery provided transportation funds to the cities and counties directly out of lottery monies. It was called LTAF-2. Unfortunately, with the recent recession and money crunches being felt across the country, the state of Arizona decided that instead of giving the lottery funds to the cities and counties for transportation subsidies, these funds were put in the State General Fund to be used for other purposes and are no longer available. There was a lawsuit by the City of Phoenix in which they were successful in having their LTAF-2 funds reinstated. Our legislators are fighting to get these funds back in the hands of the cities in need of transportation help. Please write your state representative to get our transportation funds back. And she lists the addresses of her Karen Phan and Andy Tobin, 1700 West Washington Street, Room 308 for Karen in Phoenix, and Room 206 for Andy Tobin, and the zip code is 85007. A couple more. There is one last thing that needs the council's attention. In order to fully understand my position on this, I need to give you some personal background. Marty and I have discussed this, are in an agreement that is necessary for you to better understand. Shortly after I married my husband 43 years ago, he told me his secret, which was even though he was a very intelligent man, with a high school education, he could not read. One of the reasons he was passed on was that he has had uncontrolled epilepsy since age 11, and they felt sorry for him. It is noticed in meetings that Marty says very little. One reason for this is Marty suffers from 10 to 20 seizures a day. When he has a seizure, his awareness of his surroundings is nonexistent, taking seconds to a full minute to return to awareness. Stress exacerbates the number of seizures he experiences daily. Our entire marriage, I have been the reader, writer, and speaker. I am now legally blind, making it more stressful for Marty. I was sent a letter with a form to fill out by Bruce Mallow. Being blind and having a husband that is barely literate, it was impossible to know what I needed to do with this letter. Marty is now enrolled in a DES-sponsored adult literacy program and uses the paratransit system to go to school. In order for me to communicate in writing to voice my concerns, I've had to call Cottonwood Teaching Supply, and Barb has been willing to let me dictate letters for a fee and fax them for another fee. This brings me to the reason for approaching the council. Also, I have what is called blind calling through AT&amp;T, which allows me, with operator assistance, to look up a number, which an operator dials for me for whatever I need for no additional cost. One of the calls I was assisted with was to Project Action in Washington, DC, who helps implement and explain ADA rights. Mr. Ken Thompson of Project Action has been extremely helpful to me and has explained to me that the ADA Guidelines for the Rights of a Blind Citizen, which includes but is not limited to the fact that as a blind person, I am entitled to special accommodations. Also, Mr. Thompson stated that meetings that affect me personally, for example, transportation, et cetera, must be scheduled at a time that I and others like me can be in attendance. Mr. Thompson is sending me a copy of ADA Guidelines, including the Department of Justice's role in implementing ADA regulations. This will be provided to the council when received. Thank you for your time and consideration to my concerns. I have every confidence that the City of Cottonwood will make every effort to comply with the ADA regulations and the needs of our citizens. Mary Rodriguez.
Excuse me, may I add one point? I did receive the information from Mr. Thompson. The council has copies of it, of everything I received, including Mr. Thompson's letter. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Does anyone else want to speak at the Call to the Public on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay.
Madam Mayor, you had a hand up?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
Gentleman with the cap, I think he had his hand up in the back.
Okay. Sir, would you like to speak to the Call to the Public? If you would come up to the microphone for the recording devices.
Yes, my name is Steve Hyatt. I've been disabled since 2003, and I moved from Sedona to here in 2004. I had no transportation, and I was working with cats, and I've been riding with them, and they sure helped out a lot. And then, just a little while ago, we got a voucher from NAPDA, from Flagstaff, I believe it was, and it really, really worked out real good for me. And the thing I found out here is, I found out that the bus comes up and picks me up where I live, costs approximately around $45, where the voucher for the cab is $10. And also, a lot of times, I'll wake up in the morning, and I'll feel kind of sick with the cats, I have to call a day ahead of time. And with the voucher, I can call anytime if I need to go anywhere. And there's sometimes I wake up and I don't feel like going anywhere, so I have to cancel through cats, which is another positive thing for the voucher. And also, I have a prescription I have to pick up from my doctor, and so if cats come and gets me, they have to come and pick me up, take me to my doctor, I pick up the prescription, I have to go to Safeway, drop the prescription off, and then they take me from there and back home. And the next day I'll have to go, or the 13th, I have to pick up the prescription. With voucher, they just go right to my doctor, pick up my prescription, I sign the person, well, the one person picks it up at the doctor's office, so she just goes there and drops it right off at Safeway, which is only $10. And then, the next day, if it's ready to pick up, she'll pick it up and bring it up to me. So, that saves a lot of money there. And the voucher system is just fantastic, it works out great, and I can't lift anything and stuff, so what I do, I live fairly close to Safeway, I walk there, and then I call the voucher, and then they'll come and pick me up and take me up home. And another thing that cats won't do is, I live in the back, I have a cart now, but when I didn't have a cart, the bus driver, they couldn't help me with my groceries, so they'd have to stick it out by the bus, because they said they couldn't leave the bus without seeing the bus there, and I live in the back. With the voucher, they just, if I need help, they'll carry all my groceries right to my door and stuff, so. I hope that we get, we're able to get this voucher system going back, because it, to me, it's going to save the city a lot of money, and it's a lot more convenient for people like myself, and thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else want to speak at the Call to the Public? Okay, if not, we'll close the floor to the public. Our next item is presentation of a plaque of appreciation to the city by the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and we have Superintendent Yurin with us today.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for this opportunity, and we have two plaques here actually, one for the mayor, Mayor Jones, and one for the city itself. And these are in appreciation for the city turning out for Teacher Appreciation Week in May, which was a great event to honor educators in the Verdi Valley, and in particularly our Cottonwood community. The action that was presented, the hanging of the banners, letters to the editors, the support from our newspapers, made teachers feel respected, honored, and once again, kind of rejuvenated to do the job that they so love to do, educating the children of our community. So, Cottonwood Oak Creek School District certainly appreciates the support the city gives to us, and these two plaques are artwork by our students and in recognition of your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I think I can speak on behalf of the city council that we love our teachers, and we're very thrilled with the work that you're doing with our kids, so thank you. The next item is Employee Quarter, Employee of the Quarter Award, and we have Nikki, for Nikki Arbiter Planner, and we have George Gaylert to share some information about Nikki and why she received this recognition.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to assist this evening with the presentation of the Employee of the Quarter Award to Nikki Arbiter. She is a member of the planning staff. I nominated my, I nominated her, excuse me, myself on two fronts, one having to do with the, her efforts in management regarding the Hearing Officer Program, as well as the management of the Bicycle Committee. It was a few months back when Nikki came to me and asked me to put her in charge of the Hearing Officer process, and I was only too happy to oblige, and she's been doing a great job managing that whole program ever since. Also, with regard to the, her activities and efforts with the Bicycle Committee, Nikki was responsible for assembling a strategic approach to the implementation of the Bicycle Committee, and most recently, has been successful in getting us reclassified by the American Bicyclists Committee, that is to say, moving our classification higher to a bronze level with the City of Cottonwood, which is something that I think is very significant, and I think is going to help to draw additional tourist dollars into the community as time passes.
Great, wonderful. So, Nikki, do you want to come up and share some thoughts? You've been with us, what, for a couple of years now?
No, 11 months.
11 months. Wow, how time flies when we're all having fun.
No, I feel very honored. I've enjoyed my short time here. Again, this is a community I grew up in, so it's been great to be part of it, and it's been great working with George and with the Planning Department, so thank you so much.
Well, that's great. And we actually have a plaque for you and a check, I believe, right? A check also? But because we're having our meeting here, we didn't remember to transport it here. So, tomorrow, tomorrow I will be dropping it off in person to you at your place of employment.
All right, great, look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, okay. And Tom Hall, the building inspector, was nominated for Employee Quarterly Safety Award, and as I understand, Tom's not with us here. Are we going to table this until he can be with us?
That's your own, your own direction, I guess.
Okay, and will he actually come to a meeting, a council meeting?
Oh, sure, yeah. I believe this is his wedding anniversary this evening.
Okay, so sometimes employees don't want to come to council meetings, so, okay, so can we just table this?
Sure.
Because we would absolutely love to have Tom be here with us.
Okay.
So, do we need a motion to table by everybody? No? Okay. All right, approval of the minutes of the regular meetings of 6:512 and 6:1912? I read these over, and I didn't see anything that needed to be corrected, any council members? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve the regular meeting of 6:512 and 6:1912.
Second.
Okay, the Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number nine, unfinished business, there is none. Item 10, the Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one, application for extension of premises patio liquor license permit, submitted by Larry Pritchard, licensee for Player's Sports Bar and Grill located at 1100 South Highway 260, for an event scheduled for August 4th, 2012. Item number two, special event liquor license applications submitted by Tara Shanks on behalf of the Verdi Valley Fair Association for events scheduled for September 29th, October 19th and 20th, and November 17th, 2012, at the Verdi Valley Fairgrounds located at 800 East Cherry Street. Item number three, acceptance of a Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $6,000 for Police Department overtime expenses incurred during selective traffic enforcement details and approval of the grant contract. Item number four, acceptance of a Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $15,000 for overtime expenses incurred during DUI patrols and approval of the grant contract. Item number five, acceptance of a Yavapai County Community Foundation 2012 Canine Enforcement Grant, contract number 2130879, for veterinary expenses for the police department's canines, and approval of the grant contract. Award of Job Order Contracting for Underground Contracting Services for the city's utility department. Item number seven, rejection of all bids received for the purchase of two emergency generators for the city's utility department. Item number eight, renewal of the city's waste recycling services for an additional one-year period with North American Waste Systems for city facilities. Members of the council, are there any items on the consent that you would like to poll for discussion? Members of the public, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have polled for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda, sorry.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one, discussion, consideration, and possible legal action regarding the city's continued involvement and participation in a taxi voucher pilot program, including a proposed memorandum of understanding with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, NACOG, Area Agency on Aging. And we have Mr. Faust with us to provide information tonight.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council, and your packet of information tonight, is specific information as it pertains to the Taxi Voucher Pilot Program, as well as information associated with the Memorandum of Understanding. The city has applied for, back in February of 2012, a grant which was basically called the Section 5317 New Freedom Formula Grant in the amount of $10,000, and the amounts provided are through the Area Agency on Aging through NACOG, and the amounts were identified also as a matching amount with the state of Arizona, ADOT. And this, again, is for the Taxi Voucher Program, which is basically an enhanced mobility program. It's a ADA-plus program whereby individuals can apply for vouchers through direct application with our transit system, with the CAT Transit System, using the current paratransit application process. As we look at the circumstances surrounding the benefits, et cetera, there's significant benefits, as it's already been identified tonight, and council is, I think, pretty well aware of how NAFTA basically operated in the program. The benefits were incredible, as they offered a lot of people the opportunity after hours, and that's how the grant is basically set up, is for after-hours use outside of paratransit operations. We currently operate a paratransit operation according to ADA and the ADA laws set up by the federal government, and those laws are very specific as to how we are to operate and coordinate all of our ADA paratransit program. Again, this program is an ADA-plus program, so I think one of the questions is, is this an essential service, or is it a non-essential service? That's one of the things that we're asking at this present time period. We've been going over, we've been discussing an awful lot of the program and the essentials of the program with both the state of Arizona through ADOT and the 5317 program with Dan Harrigan and his staff, as well as 5311 programming, and along with Jason Kelly, as well as their staff, and Chris Fessler with NACOG. So, we've had multiple meetings as it pertains to this. So, I know that Steve Horton and I, as well as Bruce Morrow, have been a part of a lot of those that have taken place over the last month to month and a half. One of the things I wanted to identify is, very specifically, the history of the program that was brought about by the Federal Transit Administration, and those grants are then funneled down through ADOT. The Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority decided that they wanted to pilot a program in the Verdi Valley area. By November of 2011, this pilot program took off, and at that point in time, the Cottonwood Transportation Taxi Voucher Program, which, again, is a voucher subsidy program for NAFTA paratransit clients, they signed up approximately, I think there was over 220 individuals in our paratransit program, and out of that, approximately 70 individuals took advantage of the voucher program. And at this point in time, we actually did a, we did an awful lot of research. We found out that approximately out of the 70, there was over 4,000 uses between November and basically the end of June. So, during that time period also, there was the concept of monitoring the program. It was a very difficult process for NAFTA, I think, during the, as the project started up, the City of Cottonwood was basically well on its way in taking over the process once again of the transition of CAT, the Cottonwood Area Transit System, as well as Sedona requesting that Cottonwood also take a look at and also take over the Verdi Links operation. So, we were fully into the process as we applied for the program grant in February. The history that's involved with this program, again, during the time period between November and about February, there was probably close to 20 to 25 people who were utilizing the program. After February, the program grew substantially, and then that's when the vouchers realistically started to be used successively. And the program goals that are identified through the FTA, I wanted to read those, that the Federal Transit Administration identifies that the program goal for the New Freedom Formula Grant program aims to provide additional tools to overcome existing barriers facing Americans with disabilities seeking integration into the workforce and full participation in society. Lack of adequate transportation is a primary barrier to work for individuals with disabilities. The 2000 census showed that only 60% of the people between the ages of 16 and 64 with disabilities are employed. The New Freedom Formula- The New Freedom Formula Grant program seeks to reduce barriers to transportation services and expand the transportation mobility options available to people with disabilities beyond the requirements of the ADA of 1990. The Section 5317 grant information that's provided through the application process by the state of Arizona ADOT states, "The New Freedom Program seeks to reduce barriers to transportation services and expand the transportation mobility options available to individuals with disabilities. The purpose of the New Freedom Project must be to provide new transportation options for individuals with disabilities beyond the level of services required by the ADA. Projects must be both new, non-operational before August 10, 2005, and beyond the requirements of the ADA." So based on that information from both ADOT, as well as the FTA from the Federal Transit Administration, again, this is a program above and beyond the normal ADA paratransit that we offer. In contact with the state of Arizona, one of the things we wanted to find out specifically was, was this program authorized or mandated by either FTA, through the federal government, or through the state? And in discussions with Dan Harrigan, Mr. Harrigan is the, he's the individual who is over the ADOT 5311 program. He specifically stated, no, that it is not mandated at all, and that under these circumstances, again, it's an ADA-plus program, and it's an enhanced mobility program for the ADA, and it's, again, to be used, basically, after hours or under emergency circumstances. And so those were some of the things that we wanted to find out, very specifically directly from the state, is, would this be a violation in any way, shape, or form as to mandate at ADA or anything else? And that was definitely, no, it is not. As we move forward, one of the things that we had identified very specifically, and, again, the challenges that arose from this grant through NAFTA, is, again, the challenges associated with the program. The benefits are wonderful, but also there's problems associated with the program as it presents numerous challenges. The one problem that we seem to run into constantly is that, through discussions with both the state, as well as NACOG, is the reoccurrence of the challenges, is that we discuss liability and mainly the DES requirements in the memorandum of understanding, which outlines the need for Cottonwood to administrate and monitor completely according to the guidelines. And one of the things that we discussed the other day, especially with NACOG authorities, was, once we sign on the dotted line, then we have to provide all of the operational aspects of administration, and then also monitoring of this program. And at this present time period, we're basically a one-man band show. In other words, Bruce Morrow, who is the transportation manager for the city of Cottonwood, would be the person that would be charged with a lot of this, this work of monitoring the program. The information that's specifically identified under the memorandum of understanding on page two, is it identifies under social service reporting 2.4.4.1, and it talks about, excuse me, under 2.6, it talks about providing to NACOG insurance documents that meet specified limits as set forth in NACOG General Provision Section 3.05 and DES Special Provision Section 16, DES and NACOG shall be indemnified and held harmless by the contractor. In 2.7, it talks about providing NACOG a current IRS W-9 form. 2.8 says, following fingerprint clearance requirements and guidelines as set forth by DES, DAAS Policy Number 1930.1, ARS Statute 46141, and NACOG AAA Provider Procedure for Background Clearances. It also identifies in 2.9, ensuring all drivers and those directly associated with the transportation service are trained by the guidelines set forth in the DES provisions, and that these are to be maintained, or, excuse me, and then in 2.10, it's follow all guidelines for vehicle maintenance by guidelines set forth in the DES provisions. The next page identifies that, under 2.11, is that all approval, or obtaining approval for NACOG AAA directors to use specialized subcontractors. And as we move on through the entire document for cooperation and monitoring of the program, it gets very, very complicated, as well as there is an awful lot of information that probably Steve has a better understanding of, as it pertains to the 50, I think it's 51 pages of the document, that go through exactly what we are to monitor. One of the things I wanted to do was to provide the information, and I apologize to council that I didn't have this beforehand, but this actually identifies the NACOG AAA transportation site monitoring evaluation. This basically is an example from NACOG for the site monitoring evaluation alone. It does not set information specific as to the DES operations. So the Department of Economic Security, they have their specific requirements, and then there's also specific requirements from NACOG, the Area Agency on Aging. So there's a lot of different requirements for monitoring of the program. When we researched this and did a little bit more, we felt that one of the areas that NAFTA had done was actually hired a competent individual to run their program for the enhanced mobility programs through 5317, and that was Kathy Chandler, and she was in charge of all of the program operations with the mountain line and flagstaff, as well as throughout the Verde Valley. And her job was monitoring, very specifically, everything associated with the NACOG AAA and the DES program, and the guidelines and stipulations associated with the contract memorandum of understanding. So that was her job. We would also, in turn, need to hire somebody, in reality, to implement all of the guidelines, the administrative processes and procedures, and all of the monitoring that goes with this. And so this is one of the problems that is identified, as we look at the challenges of the program versus the benefits. And so that's one of the things we're letting council know, is that for the amount of the grant, if it was more than the amount identified, say, $100,000 or $150,000, maybe there would be some worth or some context to that, and stating that that's something we definitely should be doing, is hiring somebody very specific to oversee the grant. But at this point in time, Bruce's job, Bruce Morrow's job, is very, very specific to the 5311 Rural Transportation Fund grants, keeping the paratransit rolling, keeping the regular CAT systems rolling throughout the community in the red and the blue line, and then also providing services on the links. And the services on the links are expanding rapidly. We're now seeing that, I think, two months ago, we were probably close to 4,300 ridership on weekends for one month. We're now up to 5,300. So it continues to expand all of the time. Bruce's time period now is totally taken up in those areas. So we're trying to let council know that there will be problems associated with this, as well as the information within the MOU on trying to monitor this program. From what our records show, nearly 75% to 80%, well, I'm just going to go over a little bit of the benefits, is that from what our records show, nearly 75% to 80% of the 70 individuals are Cottonwood residents. And out of that number, nearly 85% are seniors, which clearly is one of the main target audiences. From information from the NAFTA, or from NAFTA, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, approximately a little over 4,000 vouchers were used. And, again, we're looking at 70 individuals out of the 220 that we actually have signed up with paratransit. The enhanced mobility programming with all of the partners of the program, which, basically, we're also looking at trips through the senior center through this program, there was approximately six trips from the senior center that, I think that they provided transportation to the Prescott area two or three times during that timeframe, which also went into this voucher, actually, a trips program, along with the 5317 voucher program. So the senior center was also utilizing this at the end of their programming, I think in April, May, and June, where they were, they were providing transportation for socialization formatting. And that was one of the things, also, we wanted to make sure that we mentioned through the benefits. Are those essential services? Not really, because, again, it's for socialization purposes. So we wanted to identify that. As we, we were looking at the compliance issues, and, again, the many administrative burdens that we would be assuming under this funding agreement, the city would be charged with all DES monitoring requirements for compliance issues, and we would be responsible for contracting separately with taxi companies that provide services under this program, and ensuring that they comply with a whole host of NACOG, ADOT, DES, and FTA requirements, including, like is indicated before, the fingerprinting for all of their drivers, training them, and making sure that they have necessary insurance coverage. So there's an awful lot that, again, comes with the grant. We just wanted to make sure that we had indicated that to council. What are we doing about it? Again, the staff has been pretty intensely involved over the last month and a half on making contacts through Jason Kelly. And Jason, basically, he is the mobility management planner for NACOG and AAA, and we've been trying to work with them, along with the state, to try to figure out what we might be able to do. Are there any other cities within the state of Arizona that are utilizing, you know, the taxi voucher program or enhanced mobility programming? What are they doing, and how are they complying with this? Well, again, they have the staff, if they're doing this. Gilbert is actually, Gil, or, excuse me, Glendale is contracting out with an agency, which is an Easter Seals program, and that's through, I think it's First Access, and, again, it's the Easter Seals program who is actually doing an awful lot of that as a contract agency for them. There's also Yuma, who is taking on the program also. And, again, I'm not really sure how their program is formatted as of yet, but, again, we're looking into a lot of these, these different, you know, communities. There's not very many, but what we're trying to do is also work through and with the Verde Valley Caregivers Association, and the Coalition, excuse me, and what they offer, and they do offer programming throughout the Verde Valley, and we are trying to see whether or not there's an option or an opportunity with them, as well as we continue to meet and try to figure out the functionality and how we might be able to administrate the program with partnerships with them. So there are some options for opportunities in the future. Again, we just don't know how well that makeup could occur, and whether or not the guidelines would, that are presented right now through DES, how we would be able to jump through those hoops, and who would actually take control of monitoring, et cetera. So those are some of the things that we're looking at right now with the state 5317 programming, with Dan Harrigan and Jason Kelly, with AAA and NACOG. The state's only concern, when we talked with the state, was that, when we looked at the 5317 New Freedom Program, is that, did we identify within the 5311 Rural Transportation Fund grant, did we identify anything associated with the New Freedom 5317 Taxi Voucher Program in our paratransit statement within the 5311 grant document? And we went back through with the state, and we did not provide any of that information in there, which satisfied their request, because that's one of the things that they had indicated, was if that was in there, we would have to then either amend it or take a look at some other options available. But since we didn't put it in our 5311 grant program as to the 5317 taxi voucher, then they indicated that we were perfectly fine for continuing with our 5311 grant program, and there was no other concern by the state. I know that Jason Kelly is here in the audience tonight for council, if they have any questions associated with the memorandum of understanding. And, again, we're still exploring, there is that possibility, and, again, we're talking with Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition, and that opportunity. We're also continuing to look at cooperating and working directly through DES and the DDD program, which is the Division of Development's Disabilities Program, and continuing with that program service, just as NAFTA had done. It's the same thing as what we're looking at with the Service Enhancement and Mobility Services, as we even look maybe towards NACOG a little bit more, in providing for arranged transportation for eligible individuals of all ages and abilities in order to access services or obtain medical care, employment, medical appointments, et cetera. So we're trying to figure out how we can do that, as it was done in the past, as well as how NAFTA had done it, and followed through with possibly a 50% reduction in fees. So we're trying to work some of those issues out also. But are there any questions from councils that pertains to the Enhanced Mobility Program through 5317 funding?
Mr. Ilinski?
So just to get a piece of history, that we inherited the 5317 money from NAFTA. When we allowed cats to be merged into NAFTA, then they pursued the 5317 money? And then when we took cats back from NAFTA, we inherited that? Is that correct?
In reality, we applied for a grant separate, outside of NAFTA. We applied for the 5317 grant in February. They had applied originally for grants the previous year, and had been awarded, I think it was a total of $20,000 from both agencies, I think there was a total of $40,000 in that account. And when we applied, we applied in the context of the match from NACOG Area Agency on Aging, along with ADOT monies. There was no monies from Cottonwood at all that were involved in this grant when we applied for it in February. And then we were awarded or authorized, excuse me, we were authorized the funding of this grant upcoming originally, starting October 1, but knowing that NAFTA was closing down operations with the transition, they wanted to close down three months prior to the new budget cycle with the federal government. And so we had to take on the responsibilities during that three-month interim period. And so at this point in time, NACOG Area Agency on Aging has identified that, out of that $10,000, there would be $2,500 that they would move into this three-month interim period, as it pertains to the possibility of utilizing those for taxi voucher. And then the remainder of that funding, $7,500, would be then available October 1 through June 30 of 2013.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, that NAFTA had $40,000, there was nothing left by the time we took over the program.
Okay.
The money had been exhausted.
Okay.
So that money, as I understand it, that, those, the $40,000 was spent, like, in seven or eight months?
That's correct.
And now we're looking at getting only $2,500 compared to $40,000 for the three months until the fiscal year, the federal fiscal year starts October 1, and after that, for the next six months, which I had thought was a year, but only six months, we get $7,500 more dollars. So it sounds like, I mean, we had $40,000 that went that quickly in seven or eight months.
Through NAFTA, yes.
And we're not looking at very much money to fund this program.
That's correct.
But we're looking at a lot of staff time and effort in exchange for that grant money.
That is correct. It's one of the offsetting scenarios, is the administrative time is probably, that has already been spent, has probably surpassed, there's a possibility that we've already surpassed that amount.
And there's no funding for administration or for hiring another person?
No.
To administer the $10,000 grant?
No, there is not.
So they want you to do all of this, but they don't fund it?
That's correct. That would be one of the things that, if we had a better handle on it from the beginning, and I'll take that charge, is that when we wrote the original New Freedom Grant, in reading through the documentation, I should have read that documentation better and identified that this would have taken the actual context of another employee on top of the manager that we would be hiring, and that I did not see that or foresee that at that time period. But, yes, indeed, that would be true.
Now, we just approved another supervisor.
Right.
Is there any chance that that position could take on all of this work?
No. The supervisors, the two supervisors, again, the parameters with which we work right now are seven days a week, and those supervisors basically operate on, in the context of making sure that the transportation vehicles are ready and available, being used, the schedules are done properly, that the drivers are fit for duty in the mornings, as well as on the weekends. And so we have two supervisors underneath Mr. Morrow at this point in time, but, again, those are supervisory positions that are hands-on working supervisors in reality. So there would not be the time available for them to administer that type of a grant either, in the monitoring capacity.
So the taxi voucher program- So the Taxi Voucher Program provided a wonderful service that people really enjoyed.
Yes.
But if the government doesn't—if the federal government and state government do not fund this, again—I mean, will people still have services? Will they still have—they still have the paratransit?
They have paratransit.
That goes to their door. And that is—
It's curb-to-curb.
Curb-to-curb?
Isn't that right, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, curb-to-curb. So a person in a wheelchair has to make it from their door to the curb?
That's correct.
Where the bus is, okay.
Yes. So—but again, we're meeting the federal guidelines associated with paratransit, and so all of those federal guidelines associated with ADA are being met with that service.
But this other Taxi Voucher would be for after-hours after the paratransit buses no longer were running?
Yes, that's correct. In other words, it's an outside the parameters of paratransit. So if there was an emergency during the daytime, though, the person could definitely use a voucher in order to utilize it to go to the medical center, emergency room, et cetera. That's definitely in there to be utilized for that purpose. But predominantly, the system is set up for after-hours use is primarily what it does, is it allows enough freedom for individuals outside normal paratransit hours to be able to utilize that type of a program.
And what are paratransit hours?
Bruce, are they seven to—
Seven to six.
Seven to six.
Seven to six, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And we stopped running the bus on Saturdays some time ago, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't have any weekend service?
That's correct.
Okay, seven to six?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Right.
So the Taxi Voucher Program would allow something—someone to go somewhere on a Saturday or—
That's correct.
Okay. And so why did—why was there $40,000, and now there are only $10,000? And what is the hope or ability to get more than $10,000 in six months, or $7,500, I guess it is? I mean, is there any hope for this program to be funded on the state level or federal level? I mean, what are our hopes that there will be more funding?
Well, I think that, again, it's—the circumstance with transportation right now at the federal level are rather, you know, nebulous, I think, a little bit. We've seen an awful lot that's come through that says that there's possibly going to be cutbacks—we don't know—as well as programs being put on hold for the time being or whatever. But at this point in time, it's rather hard to identify whether or not funding will be available or not available. As it pertains to the—why we only went after $10,000? When we originally looked at doing this grant, again, there was like 30—20 to 30 people that were utilizing the funds from NAPDA. It wasn't a all-out type of a program to where people were utilizing it on an incredibly increased basis by between probably March and June that we saw. So at the time period when we wrote the grant, we felt that that money probably would suffice, and we didn't see that that would be a problem. But again, it went real fast, and it was gone. So that was one of the things that we saw, and we were like, oh, my goodness, that's an incredible program, it's very successful. But again, it supersedes the amount of money that was even identified by NAPDA. And so we saw that money go so fast. It's the same thing here, is that money, like you had said, Madam Mayor, will be gone very rapidly unless monitoring takes place and the specifics of the program are monitored very specifically. That's probably what will happen also, is the funding will go very rapidly.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You mentioned that the voucher could be used for emergencies to the medical center. Isn't that what our ambulance service and firefighters and our emergency services are all about?
Sure.
Should they be used for that? Because you're setting up these taxi drivers or voucher people for liability if they are answering emergency calls. So emergency—would that really fall into an emergency for a voucher program? Wouldn't that be 911?
Normally speaking, I would say yes, but they do have that availability to utilize the vouchers for medical purposes, to seek out their doctor, to—
Right.
—seek out medical circumstances or emergency circumstances to get to the doctor quickly. So they're used that way.
Yes. Councilmember Norman.
Richard, on the Verde Valley Caregivers, have you any information regarding what they can provide, when they can provide it? My understanding, at your public meeting a couple of weeks ago, was that they would take a call and pick anyone up. And did I understand correctly, it was free?
Yes. At this point in time, the Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition—they have—it's called Mobility Management in the Verde Valley subregion. And we—again, we've talked with Kent Ellsworth, who's the executive director. Their primary goals are fully develop the Verde Valley—their current call center, they're trying to do that. They're looking at volunteer transportation services primarily—that's what they do. So they have a lot of volunteers. In fact, they have a huge core contingent of volunteers. They—the one thing that they're looking at is—and their goals is to establish the Verde Valley Subregional Mobility Network, a coalition of all transportation providers, including organizations that utilize 5,300 program vehicles, and cities and towns and clients in the subregion to share, make available vehicles and resources to establish a coordinated and accessible spectrum of mobility assets to serve mobility-challenged populations. So that's their goal. So it's kind of—it's one of those where they're in the planning phase right now, and they're moving forward with that. They did receive funding through NACOG, AAA, and—but they just don't have the capital. They don't have the actual bus units that I'm aware of, Jason, that's correct. And so what they utilize—they try to utilize the best they can is cities and municipalities and organizations like NAPDA in order to move people. And so that's what—they try to partnership as best they can, and that's what they look at, is partnering in this context. And they do have a lot of volunteers, though, that can pick people up and actually, I think, move them around. Mary just got her hand up over here.
Oh, there she is. I didn't see her back there.
Well, we're going to have a call to the public, so—
Well, I was going to help him, but he's a perfect example.
Okay. Well, why don't you go ahead and come up, then? You'll need to come to the microphone.
And while she's coming up, could I ask you one more question?
Yes.
On the paratransit, they have to call the day before.
That is correct. 24 hours.
There's no exceptions?
I don't think there's any exceptions. I think it's 24 hours, correct, Bruce?
Generally speaking, we can't take same-day trips.
Okay.
Mary Eichman, 1640 West Cedar Post Lane. I have been a volunteer for Verde Valley Caregivers for several years, probably over a half a dozen years. This afternoon, I took a lady, dropped her off at her physical therapy appointment, went back. Two hours later, picked her up, you know, from her apartment back to her apartment. There's no charge. I'm a volunteer, I don't get paid. I do, however, have the ability to be reimbursed for my mileage if I choose to do that. Tomorrow morning, I'm picking a lady up over at Christian Care at 7:00 and taking her to Walmart and going grocery shopping with her. The last figures I know is that we have about 1,500 people that we help in the Verde Valley, and there are less than 300 volunteers. Over half the people that we help live in Cottonwood, and a bigger percentage of the volunteers live in Sedona and don't come to Cottonwood. They request about a 48-hour notice so that they can call the volunteer. When I signed up for this, the only requirement is they had to see my driver's license and that—my car insurance. I use my own vehicle. Caregivers in no way covers my vehicle, other than a little extra insurance if there should be a traffic accident. But that's the way it is right now. There's no charge to the people we help. There's no income requirement. They just ask—you know, that they—for some reason, because they're elderly or disabled, they're not able to drive any longer. And I really mostly transport people, so I do that several times a week. So that's where we're at right now in what Richard is telling you are plans for the future. But right now, this moment, people can get help from us.
Thank you, Mary. I didn't know you were here. Sorry, I missed you.
That's okay.
Recent information just identified that, yeah, there are over 1,600 clients, and approximately 800 definitely are in the Cottonwood area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, more questions? Do you have any—does Mr. Kelly wish to share any information or speak?
I don't know if you have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Kelly from NACOG?
I guess I don't know that I have questions. I just have a little comment about—anytime you have funding with a grant, isn't that somewhat ephemeral? I mean, there's no guarantee you're going to get a grant again next year, correct?
That's correct.
You hope so, but anyhow.
Right.
Well, it's a great bonus, it's never to be counted upon for sure, unfortunately.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this item? If not, we'll open the floor to the public then, and we have some folks who would like to comment on this item. Okay, so does—Mary Rodriguez would like to speak on this item through Mr. Lemaster?
Also, if I could, after Mr. Lemaster's address was read, the article, I do have a couple of questions to ask the council.
Okay.
Gary Lemaster again, on behalf of Mary Rodriguez. I think this letter will shed a little light of some of the issues. Excuse me. My name is Mary Rodriguez. I have been a citizen of Cottonwood, Arizona, for almost 29 years. During that time, I've had the privilege of being an active member of this community. I have been a little league mom, a transporter of children to gymnastics, and a volunteer not only at the city of Cottonwood, but for the food bank and also the food share program. I am 65 years old, and unfortunately, for the last two and a half years, I have been legally blind due to macular degeneration. I am also a survivor of breast cancer and have other multiple health problems which require me to use a wheelchair. My husband of 43 years, Martin, has epilepsy, diabetes, and kidney disease. He and I—and our son Timothy had the honor in 1989 of being voted Volunteers of the Year by the City of Cottonwood. My husband and I are both qualified, per ADA guidelines, to be paratransit riders. My husband, being more mobile than I am, also uses the route buses to do errands. Unfortunately, we have no other means of transportation other than the CATS paratransit system and the route buses. Unfortunately, the bus systems, both the paratransit and the route buses, are only available Monday through Friday until 5:00 or 6:00 p.m., I guess it is, and are not operating on holidays or weekends. While the NAPDA transportation system was running the Cottonwood Transit System, there was a pilot program for a Taxi Voucher Program, which was funded by the 5317 Coordinated Mobility Grant. This program was to supplement the CATS paratransit program. I congratulate the city council for the recent award for the 5317 grant, and I'm looking forward to the reestablishment of the Taxi Voucher Program. I would also like to address some of the criticisms of the participants of the Taxi Voucher Program in the newspaper. I would like to explain my understanding of the way the Taxi Voucher Program was to be used under the NAPDA management. I have also brought with me the written guidelines of the NAPDA Taxi Voucher Program. My understanding is that a total of 20 vouchers each for a one-way trip were issued monthly. That breaks it down to two and a half complete rides per week. This was later reduced to 12 one-way trips per month, meaning one and a half per week or as needed. As I was a person requesting the vouchers from my family from NAPDA, let me explain how the system worked. You called in with a list of your voucher needs, of what they were, i.e. a trip to Walmart, trip to a doctor, et cetera. The NAPDA staff then issued the vouchers with the destination already imprinted on the voucher. You were also allowed to have a total of four blank vouchers. By blank, I mean they were—to have only the destination left blank. In the reading of the guidelines, you will see that the NAPDA—that NAPDA had in place rules for any violation of their procedures and the possible suspension of the right of using the Taxi Vouchers for any infractions or unauthorized use. As I said, that is my understanding of the way the voucher program worked. If the City of Cottonwood can show me where I was mistaken, I will welcome their input. The memo of understanding that the council is voting on tonight is due to the fact that the city's fiscal year goes from 7:01 to 6:30, but the federal government's fiscal year is from 10:01 to 9:30. So this measure is needed to cover that period with new negotiations needing to be made as of October 1. I have received a draft copy of the memo of understanding, and since there's been a question as to the possible abuse of the voucher system under NAPDA, I would like to ask for clarification about an item on the first page of the memo of understanding. Under the section titled Agreement Number One, the project subtitled 1.2, it states, "The trips program that includes transporting seniors to and from the Verde Valley Senior Center for essential and nonessential needs." I need some clarification on this. As an English major, I'm reading that as stating that you are transported to and from the senior center for your essential and nonessential needs. I am hoping that it means that the vouchers program will actually transport ADA voucher customers for their essential and nonessential needs directly to a particular location. Thank you for your time in allowing me the opportunity to state my concerns. Also, as a former Volunteer of the Year for the City of Cottonwood, I am offering my services in a volunteer capacity to be any help you need to set up your new Taxi Voucher Program. Thank you, Mary Rodriguez.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, you're—
I have a little bit left in my time.
Okay.
I'd like to answer some of the questions that were asked.
But the five minutes are up, so go ahead, but please make it brief.
I'll make it brief.
Thank you.
Number one, the Verde Valley Caregivers, I view as very excellent organization. But my understanding of that is, again, you call it advance. They cannot transport wheelchair people or walkers, okay? So that limits that part. The other thing is, one of the council members, and since I'm blind, I can't see, you know, ooh, says what—I know it was a woman's voice—said, "Well, if they're taking you for an emergency, why don't you call the ambulance?" Well, unfortunately, January 17 of this year, I was taken to the hospital to have an mastectomy for breast cancer. I originally scheduled it with the CATS plan for 7:30, and the hospital said, "No, we want you in at 6:30." I had no way of getting there as requested. I would think it would be ridiculous for me to call the ambulance to take me to the hospital for surgery. So I did use the CAT voucher at that time. Two days later, when I had tubes, et cetera, and a 17-inch incision, I was released from the hospital after CATS hours. And my understanding—and I really wish someone to clarify—my understanding is that at 5:00, the actual switchboard closes down. So if I'm wrong, that's fine, too. But I—that was two of my needs, my personal needs, okay? The other thing I'd like to address is the fact that—there—and it needs to be explained to me, too. I have talked to Mr. Harrigan. I have talked—oh, excuse me, I've talked to Mr. Harrigan, also talked to Mr. Kelly. My understanding is there's matching funds and everything. I'm not understanding if this $10,000 grant money is just Cottonwood's portion, or is it the whole thing? Because I understand NAPDA pays half, and there's matching funds with ADOT for the other half. That's my other question for clarification. I have still a lot of questions. I know my time is up, and the council—I have given you every information that I have been aware of, including the guidelines. This is a very necessary program. And—oh, the other thing, one more thing. Kathy Chandler not only did the voucher program, but she also was the ADA representative for CATS. So I'm wondering—and also Monique, I think, was an ADA specialist, which she is now gone—is Mr.—is the new transportation director going to assume the responsibility of all the ADA? Won't you need someone to help you with the ADA anyway? Those are my questions.
Okay.
I finished, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. We appreciate that. Do we have a response?
Yeah, I'd ask Richard or Bruce to respond to those questions.
Okay.
So Richard and Bruce, can you please respond to those questions?
And while they're deciding who's going to respond, I can weigh in, at least on the funding stream, unless I'm mistaken. The rest of this federal fiscal year, this last quarter— The rest of this federal fiscal year, this last quarter, there would be, and there's two different contracts.
And this is, just not to interrupt you, sorry, but this is Steve Horton, and he's the city attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me just say one other thing here, and I apologize, I've given you, and someone read to me, there's a little pamphlet in there, and it talks about blind people going to meetings. And part of the etiquette is, please identify yourself to a person who is blind before you speak.
Which we just did, so.
Okay, I know, but, you know.
And I'll do it myself. This is Rodriguez, I'm Steve Horton.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the city attorney.
Okay.
My understanding of how the patchwork of funding post-transition from NAEPDA back to Cottonwood works is for the balance of this federal fiscal year, and that's where I'm identifying that there's two different contracts with two different agencies. What we're talking about now is $2,500 from NAECOG, and that's DES money. There's no, that's not, those are not federal dollars.
Okay.
That's DES money. In order to receive that money, which is $2,500, and then $7,500 for the balance or for the new federal fiscal year 13, we have to comply with NAECOG requirements, State of Arizona requirements, and DES requirements. That's the 51-page contract that's under discussion tonight. There is also the purpose, NAECOG stated purpose of helping us out with this amount of funding offer is to match 5317 money that is exhausted for this fiscal year. But come October 1, we believe, we applied for, and I believe we've been offered $7,500 from ADOT, and that's, for that, we would have to comply with ADOT requirements, FTA requirements.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm losing you, okay?
It's complicated.
Okay, the $2,500 we're talking about that's actually there, is NAECOG then going to match that fund, or that's just $2,500?
No, this is $2,500 in NAECOG money.
Is it going to be matched by ADOT, or no?
No.
Okay, okay. So, when you're talking about the $7,500, it's at the end of the grant, at the other end of the grant, after the October 1st, are you then talking that this not $7,500, it's actually $15,000 because you get matching money from ADOT, or I mean, misunderstanding?
I would ask Jason to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding from our discussion yesterday is that there would be $7,500 from NAECOG under the MOU to match $7,500 from ADOT under 5317.
Okay, so we're now talking about, so $7,500, we're talking about $15,000, is that right?
Right, and Mr. Kelly has stood up, and he might be able to shed some light on that.
I really like to know-
So, Mr. Kelly, if you could please come to the podium, so that, if you're not, if you're not at the podium, you're not being recorded for the minutes, and so that's the difficulty of it.
That's no problem. I don't, I don't need to record for prosperity, I just want to ask a question.
Yeah, but you do need to be, according to us, having to do minutes of our meeting.
Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen, Jason Kelly with NAECOG, thank you. Mr. Steve, the answer to your question is 50% correct. There are $2,500 available from NAECOG to match whatever available funds you have in 5317 from July 1st through September 30th of this year. Following that deadline or that time schedule, NAECOG has committed $7,500 in matching funds to the 5317 program. Pursuant to the ADOT awards that Mr. Faust spoke to, ADOT was, excuse me, City of Cottonwood was awarded $5,000. So NAECOG can commit five to the program to match the $5,000, essentially creating a $10,000 program from October 1st through June 30th. And I want to make it very clear that in our negotiations during the transition process, we shared with Mr. Faust that NAECOG would be willing to contribute those funds on the fiscal cycle that we're a part of, as is the city of Cottonwood. But any additional dollars following this particular cycle that we're talking about, which is July through June, would be up to the city to seek those funds through the competitive bidding process that we have every spring, we being NAECOG. So the intent of the NAECOG money with NAEPDA and with the city of Cottonwood is to help to get the program airborne, to determine if the pilot project, of course, is warranted and worthy, and then once those, once the program is in place, that any additional monies could be solicited through the competitive bidding process ongoing, starting next fiscal cycle. Thank you.
Okay, and the other part of my question is Kathy Chandler also did the CATS program along with her duties with the voucher program. So is now the new transportation director, is he going to take over the administration of the ADA program? And you're talking about hiring a new employee. Is Mr. ADA being a law has to be followed? And unfortunately, because I'm in the position where I am in, I very much want their rules followed, okay? And so if Kathy Chandler handled it with CATS prior to the transition, and now you're not going to hire an employee to do that, who's going to be the person that you call when you have ADA questions?
Okay, so for, I guess, the minutes records, Ms. Rodriguez is expressing that Kathy Chandler from NAEPDA was the, worked with the ADA-
Correct.
...laws.
Yes.
And she is asking for the city to answer, who will the, now that Kathy will no longer be with us through NAEPDA, who will be doing the ADA, and who will Ms. Rodriguez work with on ADA issues?
Correct, and this is Richard Faust, once again, with the city of Cottonwood. And, that's all right.
Sorry about that. I'm still blind.
No, it's all right. And, you know, in response to the question, at the time period NAEPDA was running, Monique was in that, the position of, I think she was a budget analyst for NAEPDA at that point in time. She was also working, she had ADA background and training and was certified in that area. Kathy Chandler was directly involved with the ADA program, indeed, running the 5317 program. You basically have to do that. I mean, that's according to FTA as well as the ADA program. At this point in time, Monique has left the city of Cottonwood, joined her husband, from what my understanding is, up in Las Vegas, and we've hired subsequently to that an individual. Bruce, what is her name?
Debbie Cawkins.
Debbie Cawkins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, refreshing my memory. Debbie Cawkins has taken Monique's place. That position is now called, basically, an administrative assistant position in order to encapsulize similarity with other positions within the city and their job descriptions and what their jobs are. And she will be actually going through that training, and I think that is upcoming, in fact, here at the end of this month, on the 27th, am I correct? There's ADA training upcoming? When is that training? Because I know I just saw that-
It hasn't been scheduled.
It hasn't been scheduled yet, okay. So I know that Bruce, as well as Debbie, will probably be going through that ADA training so that there will be certif, you know, certified individuals within the city working with ADA people, just in that context. So that's who we have, and that's, that's our program, and that's what we offer. It's just that we don't have Kathy Chandler administrating a 5317 program. So we do have the individual, and she will be learning the ADA law as well as being certified in that area, very similarly to what Monique was, and probably even a little bit more than Monique.
And so what, again, is the time schedule for her to be up and running with this?
Right now, she's working with the city at this present time period, and I know that I just had seen information directed from the state of Arizona identifying that there was an ADA program that was coming online fairly soon. So I would say within a month, we would probably have somebody certified in that area, a month and a half, hopefully, no longer than that. But that's from what my understanding is, and we have to work with the state on getting that certification possible. So we'll just be sending someone directly into the Phoenix area to be certified, or they'll be going through a webinar situation.
Okay, so about a month and a half. So in the meantime, before this new person is certified, who would Mary contact about ADA issues?
Bruce, do you have that information?
At this point in time, it would be me.
Okay.
Okay.
May I make one other statement? I'm sorry, but Bruce very nicely sent me a letter, which I could not read, telling me the procedure for complaints about the CATS transit system. This is where I'm up to. I actually had a friend of mine read that letter to me tonight. I'm sorry I'm blind, nobody regrets it more than I do, but in order, as you've probably noticed, not only am I articulate, but I try to be intelligent when I'm not having senior moments. I would like to be able to find out exactly what's going on, and because it affects my husband and it affects a lot of people. Oh, by the way, I didn't thank you for the courtesy of supplying transportation after hours to people who are concerned about this, these taxi vouchers. I do thank the council for providing transportation, but you see what we're up against. After, I, we, I know that you can't call into CATS after 5:00. I don't know what the 6:00 is, so maybe someone should explain that one to me, too.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify the situation as it pertains directly to Mary's question, we received information, we talked directly with Dan Harrigan from the state of Arizona ADOT over the 5317 programming, and we indicated that we would be sending directly information if that was, if that was okay with Mr. Harrigan, that we would send Title VI information as it pertains to any concerns or complaints associated with Title VI with the federal, federal government, and how they identify 5311 funding, and he said that would be doing our due diligence. And so he said, "I would, I would definitely implement that and send the letter." And so that's what we did. We went ahead and submitted that and sent that. And so, according to Mr. Harrigan, we did our due diligence in that context. I just know that we're trying to gear up, we're still trying to gear up, and that's the direction we're going at this present time period, and hopefully Debbie can get online with ADA information and certification soon, and we'll do that. I know another one of Mary's questions was specific to the gentleman who was reading the letter as pertains to the senior center and utilizing the senior center, but that's just another, another leg of the 5317 funding, is going through the senior center to offer social programming, which is what I was identifying earlier, is that the taxi voucher system is one leg of the 5317 funding. The other leg is actually a trips program. The trips program is part of what we, what NAEPDA was doing with the senior center to allow trips outside the area, and that's all of that, that is, that's the definition of that. There is no transportation offered through the taxi voucher system, you know, to and from the senior center. That's exactly what that is, is it's a, it's a recreational social program in that context.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Okay, now we have some other members of the public who would like to speak. Steve Hyatt, or Hyath?
I'm, oh.
Is Steve Hy, okay, he already spoke to the, at the call to the public. Nancy?
Scangella.
Scangella?
Scangella.
Okay, would you please come up to the-
Okay, if I say from here, you've already covered all of the grounds, all of the points I was going to make, except you're not.
If you have anything additional to say, you need to come to the podium if you're able to do so. Thank you very much. We want to be sure that what you have to say is recorded for our minutes.
Nancy Scangella, resident of Cottonwood, and frequenter of the Verde Valley Senior Center, and the participants at the table that I sit at would appreciate, we're all being kind of mature adults, that we all be cognizant of the fact that we're in this together. One way or the other, you're going to be as mature as we are. And it's a seamless transportation system that you've had in place with the NAECOG voucher system and the paratransit. Please keep that together. I feel like a cheerleading group because it's like, "We know you can do it! Please keep it. Cross the Ts, dot the Is, do whatever it takes because we really need this service." And it's a support system for many of us that don't have the, the car service or whatever it is that most people have. And we do get lifts from people, we do do the best we can. Give us the guidelines, however it works, so that you can keep it going. It works for all of us. Don't throw the baby out with the wash water. We need you, and thank you.
You're welcome, and thanks for coming up. And I apologize that we don't have a microphone phone that we can bring to you. We did our very best to prepare for tonight, but our microphone system is very limited in this particular building, and the council chambers, and, okay. James Booker?
Barker.
Barker, James Barker, Mr. Barker.
My name is James Barker, and I'm a citizen of Cottonwood. This information is new to me, I don't know, you know, all the ins and outs of it, but sitting and listening to the discussions here a few minutes ago, it seemed to me like we've got NAECOG, we've got ADOT, we've got ADA+, we've got AAA, we've got FTA, 5311s, 5317s, and basically what I would think that we're dealing with is our transportation system that should be in pretty good shape and should be collecting a lot of information anyway. You know, are we just required to fill out a different set of forms to submit, and this air pressure in the tires, and check the oil and make sure everything's okay, fingerprint, you know, background checks and things like that? Is this, I mean, are our taxi services not being regulated now? And if they are, is this information being collected? Are we just talking about, you know, a ton of work here, and a ton of work here, a ton of work here, and a ton of work here, when all we're really talking about is this information is collected and we've got to put it on these sets of forms? I mean, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Is it redundant work, or is it new work? And this all hinges whether we ask for and accept grants. It's all about money, and whether we're going to hire somebody else to take care of this, or do we really need to hire someone else to take care of it? I mean, how much information is already being collected, and how does that need to be presented to the different governmental agencies to show them that we're in compliance? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight, even if you haven't filled out a form? You're welcome to fill one out. So go ahead and grab one and come on up.
Just grab a form and go up there?
Right there, yeah.
It's written. It is written.
Hi there, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Norris Klein, I've been a member of this, or this city for 26 years. And when NAEPDA first came into being, I was, I've been running that, riding that CATS bus since they had one purple bus on the road and you called them up and said, "I need a ride." Okay? Thousands of things have changed since then. The only thing that I have to say, I understand all this stuff is very complicated, it's not going to be all settled in one shot, but I was never told, okay? First thing, I, somebody told me, what I, what do I have to do to get my LIP straightened out? Call Kathy Chandler. Okay. I call Kathy Chandler, I leave her a voicemail, I wait and I wait and I wait, you know, "Oh, what's that deal with Kathy Chandler? Oh, she never called you back?" No. Call her again, you know? So I call her again, leave her a voicemail. Nothing, okay? And I'm, I'm not lying about this, I was never called by them, and I was also never told that there was a voucher system. Over two years ago, so that's the only thing I have to say, is that the fellow before me said, "If we're going to get this thing going, let's get it in the right direction, put all the money where it's supposed to be," because it is definitely more than needed, it is essentially needed, by everybody who is qualified for paratransit. I filled out that 13-page application, and I don't think we should have to do it- I filled out that 13-page, uh, um, application, and I don't think we should have to do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I think that, um... Um, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, uh, would you please come to the podium? I guess it's called the lectern. I always call it the podium, but I learned at Toastmasters it's a lectern.
Can I say one more thing? Real quick, real quick. Those of you who don't know what LIP is, it's a low-income pass. Now, um, the gal who worked there before, who was doing the, running the thing, she wasn't doing the dispatching, she was running the, the LIP system, she would send you out a form every month, which you would sign and give it to the driver, whether you're going on the, on the, the bus or not, you'd give her the form, give them the form on the bus, and they would turn it in to Shirley, okay? So that's, that would, that would give you a low-income pass for the month, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I was up earlier, Steve Hyatt. When, uh, NAPDA, when they just canceled the voucher program, uh, I did, you know, I called them up and they said, "Cottonwood is taking over the voucher program. You get ahold of them the first and, uh, they'll go ahead and get your vouchers for you." Well, I, when I, the first come, I tried to call Katz and the line was completely, uh, gone for, I think, two or three days, but I need to go, I needed to go to Walmart, so the taxi took me there, 'cause we figured I was gonna get my vouchers. So I went and got it, uh, the thing, and, uh, I had to go back and take it back, 'cause it didn't work, made in China. Anyway, I had to go back, so that was, so I figured that was for vouchers. And finally, I forgot to hold a City Hall and, uh, see if I could get ahold of Katz, 'cause his phone line was completely down. They emailed him twice for me, finally, uh, uh, they called me, Katz did, and I said, "Well, are you gonna send the vouchers?" "No, we, we have no idea about, about the vouchers." And I said, "Well, NAPDA Thursday said that you're gonna have vouchers for us." "No, no, we don't have any idea what's going on." And I said, "Well, I have no idea." I, uh, I appreciate Katz, but I've been riding with him for about seven years now, and, uh, there's one thing is, uh, it's, a lot of times you, they'll get backlogged and I, you'll have to stand and wait and wait on them, and they have a thing. I said, "Okay, pick me up at 8:30." "Well, make sure you're ready at, uh, uh, 7:15," you know, "or at 8:15," and stuff. And, uh, sometimes I'll have to go to the doctor, and they'll come there early, and, uh, then I'll be sitting at my doctor's office, and other times, they'll come right up to for my doctor, where I have to call them, "Well, we're backlogged," and I, you know, and I, "Well, I gotta get to that appointment." So I've had trouble. With the voucher system, everything is right there. I have no problem with it, so... I just hope that, uh, we can keep the voucher, 'cause it is definitely a plus for all of us here in, uh, Cottonwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think the council has made every effort to listen to every person, more than once even, who has something to say, and, and so, but we, we really appreciate the fact that you all came tonight to be with us and that you were here, and we appreciate what you have to say and what your needs are. Um, so, I guess the question for the council is, um, let me get back over here. Suggested, suggested motion is to be determined. We didn't really have a recommendation, other than what we heard from Richard. So I guess the question is from the council, um, do you want to continue, do you want to get the, the $10,000, as I understand it correct? We're going for...
Well, again, it would, it would initially be $2,500 to last us from this point until, um, October 1st.
And from the comments, I'm not sure that the public understands that there are very limited funds. We don't have $40,000 anymore. If the council does accept this, we have $2,500, and it's, it's a very small amount. It was a program that was, um, it's an experiment, and I think people got really used to it and really needed it and appreciated it, and, um, so we're just dealing with something that isn't for sure funding even for us in the future, but...
You know, Mayor, if I, if I could just summarize, um, it's, it's, um, you know, it's a wonderful program, and, and I think everybody recognizes we'd love to keep it and, and, um, improve upon it even. I think the, the problem, and, and Steve can probably help me with this, too, is, you know, we're initially talking $2,500, and then I guess $10,000 starting October 1st. The, the requirements in terms of monitoring this program are really, you know, they're really difficult, and it's almost like taking on the taxi companies as our, as our employees and our responsibility, and I, I certainly understand that as well, because we wanna make sure that, um, our citizens are being taken care of in terms of quality service from the, from the taxi companies. Um, it's just, what we were trying to do is find possibly a third party that could actually, you know, who actually provides a service currently, to be able to continue on in the same fashion as the taxi voucher program. And, uh, to date, we haven't been able to find anybody to do that. Um, my concern is, and certainly if the council directs us to move forward with this program, is our ability to meet the requirements of the MOU, um, in terms of DES regulations and ADOT regulations and, you know, NACOG regulations, and, and it does place the city in a certain amount, provides the city with a certain amount of liability if, for some reason, we don't follow through, uh, or we're not able to complete all the monitoring requirements as outlined in the contract. And, and so that's, that's the major concern here. And again, the investment of, of staff time for what really appears to be a minimal amount of money. I mean, strictly from a business, um, perspective, uh, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I understand the, the community need, and, and that's certainly something that needs to be weighed as well, um, but from a business perspective, it does not make a lot of sense. And, and I would just turn it over to Steve, uh, from a legal standpoint, and give you his perspective about the requirements.
Right, and I think Doug, Doug has it exactly right. Um, we will, we will do whatever council directs us to do. If it's, if it's an outsized effort, um, to get us through this, this federal fiscal year, we will make that effort. We will work with NACOG, we will develop the contracts with the taxi providers, we will contact and monitor the taxi providers, we will do the upstream reporting, um, if, if that's council's will. Um, we just, there is an awful lot of, um, upstream and downstream obligations attached to this money, both to finish out this fiscal year and to carry over into next, and, and we just wanted to make council aware of that.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dowling?
Yeah, this is Jesse Dowling, council member. Um, I just wanna sort of, my take on that is, do we have any idea how long NAPDA had to get themselves to the point of being able to implement the system? As far as, you know, they were already in the, in the works to do it. They already had the infrastructure in place and were able to implement the program. And now we're sort of, you know, in, in the, the process that we're in of taking that over, we're sort of starting from square one, so to speak, on that. So I think that I would, um, at least for myself, I know we all want the program. It may take us, I would say it may be reasonable that it would take some time to get to the point that we were at previously when NAPDA was handling it with their infrastructure, because essentially it would be adding a whole other level to it, because there was one person who did nothing but manage that program. And so if they already had that in place, it wasn't much for them to add on to it. Starting it from scratch might take a little bit more, a little bit more, uh, a little more time, I guess might be the way to put that. Am I correct?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Dowling, I think that, this is Richard Faust, once again, uh, with City Cottonwood, and, um, I, I remember that Kathy Chandler had addressed the City Council April of 2011, um, identifying that they were going to seek this pilot program, try to maneuver it, see whether it would work for the, the Verde Valley. Um, they did not get the program in place in reality until November. I think it was almost at Thanksgiving time. Um, and then that's where it started to, from about November through February, you know, again, there, there was, there was a smaller amount of individuals utilizing the service, and it caught on very quickly after February. But again, how long, I think that they applied, um, Jason Kelly can probably correct me on this, but I'm sure that they filed in the same context of, of, uh, February of 2011, and then they were notified, and then Kathy Chandler spoke with the City of Cottonwood in April, and then, um, it took them approximately five to six months to get the program going, um, here. They even had the, um, the preliminary data and information, as well as all of their startup information from working the mountain line and Flagstaff, and seeing that the success of the program in, in Flagstaff on the mountain line. So it still took them a while to get things maneuvered and moving in that direction. So hopefully that'll give you that information, that's the best I can provide for you.
I'm just trying to get a better idea of the whole...
Right.
Hi, Smee.
Karen Pfeifer. I was the one that commented on the emergencies. I have a neighbor that I get a call from. One year, I got a call from her about 10 times to take her to the emergency room. It wasn't a, to me, an emergency is very life-threatening at the moment that needs immediate care. So I would go to her house and I would pick her up. The last time she called me, and I'd stay at the emergency room till it was time to bring her home. The last time she called me, I got to her house, it was a true emergency. I called 911, because I, myself, could not transport this woman, and that's why I made the comment about the emergency. Um, I didn't mean to offend you or anything, but...
No, that's fine. I just...
But to me, emergency is something that really needs immediate care, and it's life-threatening right now.
I understand.
And, and not everybody has a neighbor that will go and sit all night at the emergency room with them and then take them home. I understand that, but that, I just wanted to clarify that for you.
I appreciate that clarification, and I do appreciate it, and yes, I know how to dial, and I won one very well. And I do it, unfortunately, a lot. I've been hospitalized this this year twice, and I, I don't like it, but I know how to dial. I have one more.
Okay.
Mr. Ilinski?
Uh, Tim Ilinski, council member. I just feel like, based off the information we've gotten tonight, I don't see how, um, without getting bigger grant money to support staff member or getting another partner agency to take on the, the oversight, I don't see how we can, right now, uh, keep this program alive beyond maybe just the $2,500 that we'll, we'll get to last out the rest of the, uh, the federal fiscal year. Is that correct?
Well, and, and Mr. Ilinski, the, the $2,500, under the MOU that's, that's in your packet, we would get $2,500 for the next three months, and then, uh, maybe this has changed, uh, you know, 'cause Jason corrected me, but the document itself talks about a balance of $7,500 for this contract term, um, which would be for the balance of the federal fiscal, or, for the federal fiscal year, October 1. Well, it's nine months, because it's the beginning of the federal 13 through the end of the state 13. I got a thumbs up.
Okay.
Um, so we're, we're talking about this MOU's $10,000. We've applied for a grant, um, from ADOT that will kick in, in October, and, and so that's, that's the pot of money that we have.
Right. I just, I feel like we've, we've tried to do a good thing here. I think we can all be proud that we have a Katz program in Cottonwood. We can be proud that we meet the ADA requirements, we don't exceed them. I think we would all like to continue to exceed those requirements, but we're really a very small city right now. NAPDA was much better staffed to handle this sort of thing. We're, we're doing the best we can. As the gentleman stated earlier, we started with a purple bus, and we've grown to what we are now, and we really should be proud of that.
That's true.
Um, I think this is just a little too soon for us. If we can take a step back and try to get this program implemented in a fashion that the City of Cottonwood can actually handle it, and maybe not take federal money, which is so difficult to, to manage, um, I, I feel like we can hopefully get the program back on its feet at some point in the future, but right now, I, based on the information I have tonight, I just don't see how that's possible.
I, I don't think that the $2,500 would, is going to take very many people, or, I, I mean, it's not going to meet the expectations we have from our disabled population for their needs. It, it's just not going to meet those needs.
Yes, and I, Richard Faust, once again, I, I think that the mayor's correct and, and, um, Councilman Ilinski's correct, in the context of, if we went through it, if, if it was, um, gone through so quickly with NAPDA, with that amount of money, we would probably be looking at, um, the system being totally tapped out and bankrupt probably by November or December. And, uh, that's what I foresee, anyway. And then where would we be for the remainder of the, the six months? So, um, and then we'd be back at the drawing board again, where are we gonna obtain money in order to keep a system going that is a great system? But again, you know, how, with all of the other challenges that we see, um, how would we continue on with it? That's the question also, though we know that it is a good service.
Hi, Smee.
Uh, Karen Pfeifer. I hate to think that it's going to go away, but if we can scale back until we can, like Mr. Ilinski said, um, until we can fund it ourselves without waiting for a grant, because grants aren't guaranteed, like Mr. Dowling said. They go away, and we've seen a lot of that happen in some of the grants that we've received with police, fire, uh, all of, all of the grants that we've received, so, so we can, if we go ahead and do it right now, go gung-ho, and then it's gonna go away, we're gonna be in the same position we're in right now. We need to try to figure out a way over the next year or so to where we can implement a plan, we can fund a plan, and we can continue with a plan, so that the, the disabled or people that need this paratransit or the voucher system, we don't have to, they don't have to sweat it if they need a ride to the hospital or the doctor or to the store or wherever they need to go. And I'd like to be able to do it immediately, and, and I, I know we can't, because we don't have the money, but I'd like to see it to where we can do it ourselves and not depend on the grants, and, um, aid from NACOG is wonderful, they've been wonderful to us, but I, I think somehow or other, we're gonna have to come up with a plan over the, in the future to where we can actually do it and keep it going.
Yes, Councilmember Norman?
I served on the, um, NACOG board as a representative for the City of Cottonwood, and I know when Kathy Chandler first made a presentation to City Council, plus she did a presentation to us at the NAPDA meeting, I was very impressed. She had a lot of knowledge about paratransit and all of the needs that she had to deal with and all of the requirements. So we don't have that staff person, and that's a huge amount of money that is not there. So I agree. I think this is something that we need to work on, and whether this would last six months or a year and then maybe go away, but we need to work on it and come up with a good plan and have the funding. Some of the wheels have gone dry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dush.
If I, if I could just make one comment, too, that, um, I think it's fair to say that even NAPDA had, had difficulty monitoring this program. I mean, Kathy Chandler is not office down in this location, uh, she's up in Flagstaff, and, and based on some of the data we received, there, there probably wasn't the level of monitoring that, that, um, uh, should have gone on, and that's not a, a slight of NAPDA. I mean, it's simply the facts that they struggled with providing enough staff to monitor this program as well. And, and I think there was probably even some question as to whether they were meeting DES requirements in terms of monitoring and inspecting and those kind of things that, that are required. So it, it is a difficult program to monitor.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Haddig, did you have any comments? I think everyone else has commented.
Well, I, I've been sitting here, listening to everyone, and, uh, you know, back in my mind, I'd like to see this program continue, at least, uh, till we, you know, uh, finish out this year. Might give us a chance to look for some alternatives, but, uh, you know, there can't be any, any guarantees after these funds that are committed... any guarantees after these funds that are committed to us are expended. I mean, there's just no way to do it. So I agree. It's a good program. Hopefully in the future, maybe we can even expand our CATS vans, do some longer hours and weekends and so on and so forth, but that's not the reality right now. So for the meantime, I'd like to finish out the year and then continue looking for some alternatives and maybe come up with something at that point.
So you're hoping, the finishing the year is getting the $2,500?
Right.
And going until the 1st of October?
Right.
And do we have, do we have the ability to maintenance that with our staff and be able to follow all the rules?
As Bruce is saying, no, we do not. We would not have those capabilities. That's our problem is to, as Mr. Horton has indicated, again, this is Richard Faust, the essence of the grant identifies that you must, it's not that you're, you know, obliged to do it. We must follow through with the monitoring. We must follow through with all of the guidelines, the stipulations, the standards, the procedures. Every aspect of that grant has to be followed and there's a large level of programming there that would need to be done. And again, we don't have the personnel available.
And so, Mr. Hodeguy, it sounds like we would need to figure out funds to have a person administer this because our current staff cannot do it. Even, I mean, and...
I was kinda hoping we do kinda like NAFTA didn't get away with it for a while.
And I mean, I think that our attorney is advising us of the liabilities of taking that stance.
And I understand that, you know, and I'm speaking because I understand how valuable this program is to a lot of our citizens here.
Absolutely.
And that's the bottom line and that's where I'm coming from, you know. I guess at some point we gotta look at reality and reality is, the funds aren't there. It's a difficult program to monitor as we've been told over and over, but yet I still think that we can continue to work on this issue and try to come up with a solution in the future. I mean, we don't have to quit now just because we have these shortcomings now. And I do recognize the need, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bartosz.
And kind of down along those lines that Mr. Councilman Hodeguy brought up is, if I could make a suggestion and maybe the council can take it as a recommendation and staff struggled obviously with creating a recommendation for the council on this because quite honestly, we're still trying to find a solution to see if there is some other alternative, some way to keep this program going. And so again, I don't know if there's a timeline on the MOU, but I guess my suggestion to the council would be to recommend against signing the MOU tonight and directing staff to continue on with our efforts to see if there is some other alternative that we can come up with, a third-party provider, some additional funding, some additional staff, some other way that maybe we can continue to provide this program, at least until the money runs out.
And I was going to ask that question. Would you be able to continue on with your negotiations with the caregivers? I mean, I don't know if the senior center would be interested. They have as few, fewer people than we do to administer programs, but whether they would be interested in taking it on or, you know, whether there's another nonprofit that might be able to, that provides services to seniors and disabled people, if they might not be able to help out with it, if you could continue on with that work?
Well, we've been, we've definitely been in touch with Kent Thompson down and with the Easter Seals and with the program there. And he's indicated he would try to follow up there and find out what they might be able to do or whatever for this area. Again, we're, I don't, I don't think that there's a timeline at this point in time and Jason's shaking his head no, so there isn't a real timeline on that. So it might give us the opportunity and chance to continue on with Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition, checking with them, seeing whether or not there's some opportunities there. That's our great and biggest hope is working with them. And again, I think Jason Kelly feels the same way that that would be our brightest star to try to, you know, hone in on.
And you've already talked to them, right?
Yes.
But you just haven't gotten a response?
Right, that is correct. We continue, every, Mr. Kelly has sent the memorandum of understanding directly to Mr. Ellsworth as well as the information that we've supplied. All of that information has been provided to him and there, I think they're looking at it. They know it fits within their mission and scope, so there might be some opportunity there, but until they say yes, we can't move. We're just gonna try to maneuver and we can do that as council directs us.
So council, vice mayor.
So basically, we can't afford to continue, this is Karen Pfeifer, can't afford to continue with a status quo, but we also, as a council, and I know this council pretty well, we're not gonna quit. We can't afford to quit either. So we need to continue to find a solution and a way to help these people and our riders, but we're just gonna have to change the program up a little bit, right?
That's correct. I know that currently Bruce is, he's reacting to the necessary needs within the community. He's already, I mean, he's already indicated that, you know, he's sending out paratransit even the day of instead of 24 hours. So I mean, we're trying to do whatever we can in operating the service. It's the same thing as what we've, what we're doing right now with the 5311 Rural Transportation Grant Program through contact with Director Norman and then also the grant program administrator. And that's Sarah Allred. She's just replaced Matt Carpenter. We've talked with both of them. And again, it's something, we're wanting to get back to our original frequency, 30 minutes, every 30 minutes within Cottonwood. We want to establish the third leg of the system again. We want to reach out into other communities. We wanna increase frequency in those areas and I've just been told the same thing is just slow down a little bit, Richard, and give us priorities because there's no money. Then there's a lot less that we see in the future. So that's coming directly from the state. So it's, it's one of those things we're trying, we see the advantages, we see the potential of the service for the public service opportunities. We, again, this is nobody's fault. We wanna move forward, just as vice mayor was indicating. It's something we desperately want to strive for and I know Bruce is the same way. You know, whatever we can try to get, we're gonna try to get and we'll do the best job we can with what we have.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And I wanna make sure that the community is aware of this, that, one, as you indicated, this was an experimental program and in essence, it doesn't exist as of the point where it ran out of money in June. And we are, you know, fortunate enough, and again, it had nothing to do with the transition from NAFTA to CAT. I mean, they had run out of money and the program came to a stop. The only reason we have found this $2,500 is through the work of Bruce and Richard and Mr. Kelly to try and keep this program going. And so we're gonna continue to try and find some way to make this work and we'll certainly be bringing it back to council to get your approval for whatever we come up with.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from council is that we want staff to continue to try to work with organizations within the community who might be able to enhance services that are provided by the city and that the city is going to continue to try to find ways to provide services to our disabled and, you know, whatever we can do to help within our limitations of resources, which means people or staff resources and funding resources. So I think, is that the direction of the council? I mean, is direction okay or do you need a vote?
I agree, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hodeguy.
So I think it's, I'm seeing the council coming to consensus on this item that we would ask staff to continue to look for ways to provide services to those who need them.
May I ask one other question? I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that we probably have order, Robert's Rules of Order, but you were very nice in inviting the disabled to be part of this meeting even when it's past the CATS hour. I would like to request at this time, as this is an open issue, whenever it's being discussed, please invite the disabled to have the opportunity to come and participate in this process. So CATS is not available for us to come as, would you please make an issue, it is actually ADA rules, I'm sorry, but it is, to allow us as a disabled to be part of your decision on something that really involves us? And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think that that is the intention of our city, that anytime we do have an issue of, about the bus, the CAT bus now, not NAFTA bus, the CAT bus, that does impact members of the community, that we will provide transportation for meetings and also do the process like we did with Mr. Morrow, that he will send out the press releases for the radio and that we will be very conscious of that.
Something for the blind, don't forget us blind. We have to have a different format. Anyway.
Mr. Klein.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one more question. For those of us who did qualify and fill out that 13-page application, are we gonna have to fill out anything again or are we still in the computer?
Okay, you're talking about the block grant now. You're talking about the NAFTA block grant for low-income people. That's what he's discussing here. That was one of the issues I brought up. And at this point, Catholic Social Services has the $5,000 and those of us who are qualified by being low-income are left out. We don't know where we're going with this. We are at this point unfortunately having to pay full price for the CATS.
And unfortunately, the Catholic Charities is its own nonprofit organization and there is no mechanism for us to speak on their behalf, so we don't, we don't know.
But they have, the original money was for NAFTA. It was a block grant that NAFTA gave to Catholic Social Services.
And I would, I'm guessing that the $5,000 may be gone, but I don't know.
I have no idea.
It doesn't last long. But I can't speak on Catholic, no one here can speak on behalf of Catholic charities, unless Jason can. Jason, do you?
Is that $5,000 ever...
Lectern, please.
I somewhat can follow the trail of money. The $5,000 you're referring to did not come from NAFTA. It came from NACOG, Community Services Administration. In fact, there was an additional $5,000 that also came from Community Services, which is another program under the NACOG umbrella, to the NAFTA program as additional match for this program we're discussing tonight. So it's my understanding that that $5,000 we're discussing here was not from NAFTA, it was from NACOG. That went to Catholic charities.
But it's for low-income people and that's what we were using it for, to get the pass for half price. Where do we stand on this?
We would have to speak, I'm not the program manager for Community Services Administration, nor can I speak on behalf of Catholic charities. I would recommend we speak with staff for both and I know both staff and I can facilitate that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. By the way, may I say here that both Mr. Harrington and the staff of the city of Cottonwood, Mr. Kelly have been wonderful source of information to me personally and they have done it to me, with me verbally, which is the only way I can do things at this point. I want to thank them and I want to thank the council for their time. And, you know, please help us with these issues.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts to get here tonight and be here with us and your input and we certainly care about you and will take into consideration in helping in any way that we financially and people resources can. So I think that we've covered that item and so I would move on to item number two, Public Hearing Regarding the Adoption of the City's Final Budget for Fiscal Year 2012 to 2013. And I don't know if the bus is going, what are the, is the bus going to allow people to leave now that want to leave or how is that working?
If they wish to leave now, they may.
Okay.
The bus is waiting outside.
Okay, so you can, if you wish to leave now, there is transportation for you waiting. Okay, so we have, Mr. Rodriguez is going to cover, is going to introduce this item and it will be a public hearing.
Mayor, council, as we do every year, we hold a public hearing before we actually adopt our tentative and our final. This is our final budget. Again, this particular document is not necessarily set in concrete. We do have an expenditure limitation. We have to bide by between the tentative and the final and we will hold fast to that. However, at this point, we'd like to go ahead and open it to the public to go ahead and get some public feedback on anything they'd like to talk about within this particular document.
Okay, thank you very much. And Nikki, Nikki's gone already, right?
She just left.
She just left. I wanted, when we got done with that item, I wanted to present, but I'll take this to her tomorrow. Okay, so right now we're going to open up the floor to the public on our proposed budget, Resolution Number 2649, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2012-2013. So we are opening the floor to the public. I have not received, I don't believe I received, okay, Mr. Oliphant. So Mr. Oliphant, please come to the lectern. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, staff, may it, please, I was gonna say, may it please the court? I think I'm in the Supreme Court for some reason. I have just four questions which may or may not be able to be answered regarding this big, big document. The first question goes to whether there was excess revenue in the 211-212 budget over what was budget, excess revenue? I'm wondering if there was excess revenue when you finally closed the books, if they've been closed and how much that excess is, if there is an excess. The second question has to do with reserves. This budget is, contains a lot of reference to a variety of reserves and how they're going to be used. I'm wondering if it's possible that the taxpayers could be provided just a simple, straightforward list of all the city's reserve accounts or reserve-like accounts. For example, you've had $600,000 in a reserve account for the rec center. It's not quite a reserve account, but it's still reserves. And there's apparently a trust fund of some sort that is being administered by the city, things like that. Is it possible for the citizens to obtain a list of these reserves by name and the amount of money that is currently in them? The third issue has to do with the rec center. I think I did calculate it, but I would want to be certain about it. My question is, in this current budget, what are the total dollars that are going to be spent in this budget if all these dollars are spent in this fiscal year? This would include the possible solar project, whether you put $600,000 in reserves again, the bond repayment and the subsidy for the maintenance and operations that you have to include. And then I have also understand there's some additional maintenance that has come up and problems. So overall, can you provide the citizens with a reasonably accurate estimate of how much money will be spent from this budget? And then finally, sort of a, I suppose, more technical question brought up on page 284 of the budget. This involves our return, the city's return on investments and the return in 2009 was $1.7 million and the return on investments estimated in this year is only $344,000. So my question is, what was the total corpus approximately in 2009, if the city knows? And what is the total corpus on which this investment of $344,000 is anticipated? So those are the four questions that I have. If it's possible to get answers to those, I would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez, did you get those?
Well, as usual, I get a bunch of questions of which, of which I can't, most of Well, as usual, I get a bunch of questions of which I can't, most of that information is in the documents themselves, if you go through them. But let me give her a couple of things. First of all, there's no $600,000 inside of the rec center budget. The rec center budget does not have the reserves. The $600,000 you may be referring to is the $600,000 reallocated for our compensation study. As far as the breakdown for our reserves, they're very clear. They're in the council's budget. We have about 400, a little over $4 million of reserves set aside, which are required. It's a 30-day, excuse me, 60-day coverage. We also have 0.2% in sales excess after we pay for our library debt service, goes for public safety capital improvements. We also have the $600,000, and we also have $1 million set aside in that fund, where we take the previous year's revenues and use 2.8%, I believe, 7%, and add them to this $1 million. However, council has requested it that during these trying times that we cap that at $1 million. So there, and there is an explanation for each and every one of those if you go through the document itself. Let me see what else you have mentioned. I'll try to cover as many of these as possible. As far as excess funds, that, we haven't completed our audit, we probably will not complete our audit till later on this fiscal year to come up to more of a figure as to how much money we have left over. But traditionally, we don't have very much left over. Over the past few years, we've been real fortunate to have the reserves that we've had in the past. We've actually tapped into those reserves, as you know very well, because we have basically used those reserves to do, acquire property and assets for the city, our court building, the public safety, not the public safety building, but the utility building, which houses some of our planning and public works areas. So if you're asking how much money we have had left over or excess money over the last few years, we have not had any. We've actually used our reserves to buy capital projects. But we can look at that once we have our audit taken care of. And then against you, at some point, you need to probably give me a call, so we can go ahead and talk about which funds you're talking about, because we have multiple funds, and all of, and a lot of them are independent of each other. As far as the returns, I'm not sure what your question is on page 284, on the return on investments. All I can say, if you're asking why there's such a large drop, obviously, we had, in 2007, we had borrowed $20 million to build our rec center, expand our library. We were able to invest it. We were fortunate enough to have invested it nearly 6% to bring in quite a bit of revenue, which also allowed us to build up our parkway here for our Brian Mickelson Parkway. We were also able to amass enough interest during that time to be able to expand the pool as much as we did. As you may recall, we initially wanted only, we're going to invest $300,000, and ended up investing in about $1.2 million. A lot of that was savings on projects and the interest that we had accrued. So I'm hoping I've covered at least some of those items. Was, did I miss one of them?
Well, I'm wondering if Mr. Oliphant's referring to the $600,000 that's left over from the investment of the God loans for the solar projects.
That, that's the other solar project. That's kind of like the remaining interest that we have from the God loan that we had accrued from some time back. We still have that available.
But we're anticipating, we're going to put solar into heat water, so that money has been set aside for that?
Right. And we've had a, we had a workshop a few months back concerning that, as far as where we were, where we stood on that particular project. We, initially, we've got, we've got about, actually, 500, nearly $600,000 set aside for the solar project. Will the project come in at that point in time? We're still working, trying to figure out exactly the scope of the project itself. But we do have $600,000, nearly $600,000 set aside for that particular project. And that did come from our God loans and the interest we were able to accrue for over the years while the project was going forward.
And I think in that meeting, we also talked about if there were funds left over that the council might go ahead and, with the playground equipment for the Parks and Recreation Center, out of that $600,000, but we don't know right now.
That, that's something we're going to be looking at.
The budget isn't setting these kinds of details. It's just setting an expenditure amount that we can't go over as the year goes on.
Correct. And one of the, again, I'll explain why we, in the city of Cottonwood, we actually set aside a lot of these reserves, is because we do want to make sure that we have the budget capacity to be able to take on big projects if they do come across grants and such. Plus, we also, we also budget for emergencies in case there is. In the case of the solar project, we have discussed that if there is any money left over, we want to allocate that to the rec center for their water, children's water feature. One thing we really didn't touch base on this year, but we, it is in the budget, is we did set aside $40,000 for the upgrade of all the parks, all the children's parks, to get new apparatus, including the pocket park over in, I think it's Tierra Verde or something like that. So we were looking to go ahead and build that park up, as well as the other two parks that we currently have.
Right, because our playground equipment is pretty much in great need, even at Riverfront Park.
Right. It'd probably be just as expensive to try to repair it as it is to go and replace it. We've already looked at trying to replace it this year.
Okay, so we're still in the public hearing part. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on the budget? Mr. Oliphant?
Just so I don't misunderstand, at least one of the figures here, my estimate is, and please correct me, that the approximate total dollars that will be spent this fiscal year in this budget and the rec center are approximately 2.5 million. That includes the bond, the solar project, M&amp;O, the maintenance, the extra maintenance. So correct me if I'm wrong. That's the only thing. I just wanted to be sure I did pass on incorrect information. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
In reality, it'll be over $3 million. We have, our debt service on it is about $1.5 million. It's about, nearly about $1.5 just for M&amp;O, and then the other $600,000 for the solar project that got set aside. Now, mind you, not necessarily does it mean, because we budget it, it's going to be spent. Obviously, if there's no revenues coming in, we have to make adjustments. But budget-wise, yes, we're looking about $3.3 million.
And the parking lot is always full.
And it is.
Okay. So if there are no more comments from the public, we'll close the floor to the public. And do you have any more comments, Mr. Rodriguez?
Just as I do, as I do every year, I get my little five minutes of budget fame on this thing. So just want to go ahead and just mention a couple numbers here for the public. One of them is, your final budget for this upcoming year is set at $73,430,000. We also, it does include the city's merit program. It also has some frozen positions that we have not done away with. We just have them basically frozen. There was very few reclassifications, except in fire, where we actually made some interim positions as permanent, to permanent positions. We still contribute quite a bit of support for dependent healthcare. While other cities have cut it out, we continue to support that. We also are going, looking to implement, and it's already in the works, the compensation study. We're looking to hopefully have it done by mid-August to late-August, and it will be retro to July 1st of this fiscal year. With adopting the budget, we have the permission from council to go ahead and purchase all budget equipment, though we're going to delay some of those things till mid-year. Mind you, just so you know, that most capital projects, even though we've got them authorized through budget, they do come to council for their approval before it ever gets done. And also, we, council accepts the expenditures, as noted in the budget document itself, as presented through the many workshops that we've had, both with council as we have with our department heads. We have a budget, a balanced budget as required by the state of Arizona. Everything has some sort of revenue stream, even if it is called for from our reserves. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, we, oh, Mr. Dowling, go ahead.
I think, as I might have last year, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rodriguez for all his hard work on the budget, and assure the public that if they have any in-depth questions, a direct call to Mr. Rodriguez and a possible meeting with him might yield much more information in a much, a much more, much, trying to find the right word for this, much more, less on-the-spot way of doing it, and you might actually get quite a bit more out of it than, you know. I know Mr. Rodriguez is always available for questions, and I love to see that, because he will explain it to you, because he's explained it to me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I guess if we could just kind of go over for the public's benefit and for the public that is watching on television, just because we've set our budget at 74, or 73 million, 73.4 million, does not mean that necessarily we will be spending that money, because we have to account for any possible grants that we might receive. So we've got that plugged in here, but we might not get that grant. And so it just, the budget is a document that has to take a whole lot of things into account that we're not even sure of in the future. But we have to be prepared in case some of these opportunities, like grants, do come along.
I would, and to follow up on that, Mayor, I would like to encourage everyone to look at the document. The very first page of the manager's transmittal letter clearly depicts the difference between what we actually budget and what we expect to spend once we do a budget revision. And many of those, and just about each and every one of the past nine years, it's been in excess of 10, 20, nearly $30 million. In one case, in one year, back in 2010, I have it written down, it's 1010, but it's 2010, the budget difference was $63 million. And that was because we had some major capital projects. We budgeted the rec center, and at the completion of the rec center, we budgeted nearly $40 million worth of refunding bonds, which we never did. So you have to realize that this is budget authority, not necessarily is all this cash going to come in, and not necessarily is all those expenditures going to happen.
Okay, so if there are no more questions from the council, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve resolution number 2649, adopting the fiscal year 2013 final budget with a previously established city's fiscal year 2013 expenditure limitation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion, and I had two seconds at the same time. Who's taking credit? Okay, was that Jesse? Okay. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is resolution number 2650, approving a joint project agreement with the state of Arizona through the Arizona Department of Transportation for an asphalt overlay project.
We have to read that resolution.
Oh, sorry. Deputy clerk, please read resolution number 2649 by title only.
Resolution number 2649, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2012 to 2013, establishing an expenditure limitation. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I would just like to say thank you to the deputy clerk for putting all these little, for taking care of our iPads, and all we have to do is push a button, and we go to the item that we need to be discussing, and we really appreciate that, because it keeps us on track. Okay, so back again to resolution number 2650, approving a joint project agreement with the state of Arizona through the Arizona Department of Transportation for an asphalt overlay project at the Cottonwood Airport. And we have Morgan Scott with us to present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Morgan Scott, Development Services Operations Manager. Back in the year 2000, ADOT Aeronautics Division conducted a statewide survey, basically an inventory of all pavement at airports throughout the state, and began a priority program for resurfacing, reconstructing of those programs. Cottonwood Airport, P-52, was scheduled for an overlay of the runway during the 2012 fiscal year, 2013 fiscal year, excuse me. The proposed project would cost approximately $390,000. It includes some patching of the existing asphalt. This is, by the way, just the runway, not the apron or any taxiways, any taxiways. Some patching, some crack sealing, and then a one-inch overlay of the entire runway, and then additional remarkings. The proposed work would basically decommission our runway for approximately one week. Obviously, we can put out the necessary notums to notify all pilots and everything, that we can take care of the safety issues with that. This grant is actually administered by ADOT completely. Very little city staff time has gone into this grant. It's administered by ADOT. They selected the consultant. It's a little awkward. I'll keep going. They selected the consultant. It's actually an engineering firm that, until recently, was our design consultant at the airport, so we're very familiar with them. Should council choose to move forward with this project, the construction will likely begin in August, very likely near the end of August. Again, I believe this construct, this project is meant to cost, or predicted to cost about $390,000, and the city's contribution to that would be about the $39,000. That's the figure you see on your staff reports. This is budgeted. It was brought forward earlier, and now ADOT is just looking forward there. By the way, we would have to pay this before in order to get the project started. So that's actually what this resolution will allow us to do, is move forward with paying ADOT and getting the project started. Any questions?
And did this go before the airport commission?
This has gone before the airport commission. It will also go to them again. They will have one meeting at the beginning of August, and at that meeting, we can go over details and notifying our local pilots. Obviously, notums, gone through the FAA, those will notify any pilot wishing to fly into our airport. However, we'll go through a more local public process towards any tenants that we have at the airport.
So do I, I understand it's closing the airport down? No one can fly in?
For one week time.
For one week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's kind of big, huh?
It is. However, with enough notification, yeah, I think we can. Fortunately, we do have enough, a few local airports, Sedona, Rimrock, and Prescott.
Right, so if there's some kind of emergency for a pilot, that he would be able to land in Prescott or Sedona? I mean, if he didn't know that this was happening?
Yes, and actually, with this construction project, in an emergency, we could take a pilot. We're not, we're not tearing up the runway. At most, he'd have a one-inch overlay. So yes, in an absolute emergency, our runway would be open.
Okay.
But for someone who's flying in, yes, we may have to detour them to Sedona or Prescott for the time being.
Okay. Council, vice mayor?
In honor of Mr. Pratt, who's missing, it's a no-brainer.
It's getting a lot of money into the city with, too much of a match. So are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution 2560.
Second.
Okay, did you want to go ahead and?
I think you reversed the numbers.
What, oh, 2650, I'm sorry. I'm.
Okay, and here's.
Am I? Approving the joint, the joint project agreement, JPA 12-118, with the Arizona Department of Transportation, to construct an asphalt overlay project at the Cottonwood Airport. Is that what you need?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read resolution number 2650 by title only.
Resolution number 2650, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a joint project agreement, JPA 12-118, with the state of Arizona, Arizona Department of Transportation, for a pavement preservation project to be completed at the Cottonwood Airport. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. And because we don't have internet access here tonight, Councilmember Ilinski wasn't able to get the information on his. on his iPad, so that's why we're sharing. All right, the next item is confirmation of the appointment of Mike Kirkendall as the fire chief of the city as recommended by the city manager. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, council members, per our previous direction from the council with a department head position, I wanted to bring it to the council to get the council's concurrence with the, with the permanent appointment of interim fire chief Mike Kirkendall, again, to the permanent position. We were fortunate in that Mike Casson left us with a lot of very well-qualified candidates in the fire department to assume his position, and I did, for an interim position, as I advised the council through the management reports, interviewed potential interim candidates with the idea of giving them an on-the-job test to see how they did, and if they passed the test, I would promote them to the permanent position. Chief Kirkendall has certainly served the position well. He's, he put together the, the budget for this next year, and I know Mike has been involved in many budgets in the past as well, as, as also writing many of the grants, particularly the SAFER grant that got us the twelve additional firefighters. Mike has been with the department since nineteen eighty-seven. He started as a volunteer and has moved up through the ranks and has served as a captain, I believe, since nineteen ninety-four. So Mike has done a great job, and he's also kind of, I guess, not to, not to use a pun, but he's been tested by the trial of fire during his interim period. I think he's had at least three or four fires and some pretty significant ones, and, and, you know, I was concerned that Chief Casson was coming back and actually starting them. But we investigated him and found out he was out of town, so he had a good alibi. But I, I think Mike has the support of his peers, the other department heads, the general managers. Again, he has done a fantastic job as a, as a captain, has really stepped up to perform the interim position very well, and I would like to recommend to the council that we promote him to the permanent position of fire chief.
And I would like Chief Kirkendall, I, I know that we have Mayor Kirkendall from Prescott is with us tonight. If you would have your family stand and introduce them all, they've been sitting here very patiently waiting for this item.
This is my wife, Kim. This is my father, Marlon Kirkendall, and you sent the mayor of Prescott. This is my stepmother, Karen Kirkendall, here, and my son, Sean Kirkendall, who is a acting lieutenant at the moment in the fire department here in Cottonwood.
So if your family would stand, Kim, they're looking for some photos here. So Sean, Lieutenant Kirkendall, there you go. It's a great honor to have the mayor of Prescott with us tonight, and thanks for coming and supporting your son in this.
Mayor, thanks for letting us be here.
Absolutely.
And I learned a lot tonight.
About transit, right?
Sometimes we get drawn out, but you move it right through.
Thank you. Okay, so any comments from the public on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I will say this, I think this is a no-brainer. I move to confirm the appointment of Mike Kirkendall as the permanent fire chief as recommended by the city manager.
Second.
Okay, so Mr.-
I think we have six seconds.
Yeah, really, maybe, so Councilmember Dowling made the motion, and there were six seconds. Oh, I mean, I think the Vice Ma, the Vice Mayor was the first second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Very well-deserved, and you've worked hard for this community for many, many years, and you have gone to many, many homes on emergency bases, emergency basis, and you've saved many lives, and so keep up the great work.
And he also barbecues a good pizza.
We'll, we'll plan kind of a community celebration-
That would be great.
-to meet your new chief here in the new fu, near future.
Wonderful, thank you for that, Mr. Bartosz. Okay, moving on to creating a new full-time position in the Parks and Recreation Department to be shared with and jointly funded by the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. Mr. Fast?
Madam Mayor, council, before I get going, congratulations, chief. So just wanted to identify this, this is an establishment of a full-time, new position in the Parks and Recreation Department to be shared with and jointly funded as it pertains to the Cottonwood Oak Creek Elementary School District. And with us tonight is Barbie Ren, and I appreciate her being here also. If there's any questions on the behalf of council, staff is asking council to approve this position, which is also entering into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, whereby both the city and Cottonwood Oak Creek Elementary School District would share the total cost of a full-time employee and all the benefits package included. This, this would be a full-time exempt employee, and they would work twenty hours for the city and twenty hours then also for the Cottonwood Oak Creek Elementary School District. The position for the Parks and Recreation Department, we've been, we've actually had a part-time individual working in capacity over these last two years. We've been spending probably close to ten thousand five hundred to eleven thousand dollars in part-time position work for this position that would take on the after-school program, summer youth camp programming, and the department's youth commission, and would actually take that position and move it out of Hezekiah, Hezekiah Allen's sphere of realm and his authority, and move it underneath this person also. We're, we're looking at this cost-sharing collaborative effort on the behalf of the city and the school district, very similar to what has transpired in the past with the DARE program, and then also the shared police officer program. So it, it helps both in this capacity, and we brought this up to the council at the time period of, during the budget process, as we identified that this was something we were seeking and looking towards. And so basically, we're looking at a total approximate cost of between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars, and which will include all the benefits and retirement costs associated with this position. The one thing we wanted to make sure of, as well as when it went through Steve Horton and Doug, was that when we look at a shared position, we also note that, and I'll take you to the actual job description at the top. It says, "This is a full-time, benefit-eligible position that is jointly funded by the city of Cottonwood and the Cottonwood Oak Creek Elementary School District and is subject to modification, reduction, and/or elimination in the event that either or both entities ceases to provide funding for the position or for any other reason." And we wanted to make sure that was in, in there on the behalf of both entities and for our purposes. The shared position will definitely be workable on the behalf of the school district. It's just they need to hire quickly, and so we, we need to move forward quickly if, if you give staff approval in this position, and we would probably request Iris's assistance by tomorrow as we would go out for a position rather rapidly, because they do need the position filled if council moves this direction. Are there any questions on the behalf of council to myself or to Superintendent Urin?
Mr. Ilinski?
We've essentially been funding this part-time position for a while now, so it's, we're not going to have to come up with new money to fund this, right?
There'd still be around ten thousand dollars of general fund money on top of what we currently have been spending in the part-time budget, so we'd have to come up with that money. But again, I think that that's already been identified through Rudy. He asked me, "Should I stay, and do you need my help?" And I said, "No, you can go." But yeah, it, it's already been pretty well, it's been identified in, in that capacity. The only thing we would do is we would subtract that amount out of our part-time budget, because we would no longer need that money in the, in the part-time budget, and I think that's one of the things that Rudy would implement.
So what would happen in the case if Oak Creek School District didn't need that employee anymore? Could the city still retain that employee just on a part-time basis only?
Yes, that would be something we would have to work out again. We'd have to then try to establish that, number one, is the person would, would accept the position as a part-time, and then number two, if not, we would have to then go revert totally back to a part-time scenario and hire from, you know, within the community, probably if not one, but two people as we would share the position off and on, because that's what we've been doing predominantly, is trying to work with two different people, sometimes one person longer or whatever, so. But again, it's been a part-time position of about ten thousand five hundred, eleven thousand a year on our part-time budget.
I guess my only concern is just if we bring on a new employee, if the funding isn't secure on their end, you know, we don't want to put somebody's career on the line.
Right. And that, that, that would be a, that would be a problem, so it'd be something, again, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a move that we've taken before on the behalf of, I guess, I don't know, with the DARE officer or the police department, but the position was continued to be funded that I, that I remember, but again, I don't know whether there was any other implications or problems with the position, so.
Didn't we get into a situation like that with our SRO recently? It's been a couple of years where we couldn't, couldn't-
Well, we've been funding, we've been funding the SRO, correct?
I thought there were, I thought we had to work out a negotiation at the last minute. There was not enough funding available or something.
Madam Mayor, council members, and I'm trying to remember, but it seemed to me that, and Barbara may, or Superintendent Urin may know better than I, but it seemed like we did lose grant funding, and I think, as I recall, the police chief went ahead and assigned an officer up there.
To share, but he had to go between all the schools.
It was shared between the middle school and the high school.
Okay.
Because his, I think his reasoning was is that he would have someone there anyway.
Yeah, they get so many calls from the schools that it, it just made sense to have somebody stationed there. So, and hopefully, we get those grants back someday, maybe.
But what, what this is saying is, when you hire this person, they know that this is, it could be temporary, it could be a year, it could be two years, it could be six months. I mean, when you hire them, that's just going to be part of accepting the job.
That's correct, and as it pertains to when you, when you, if you've ever gone in onto the federal register on checking out federal jobs, they're identified for one year, eighteen months, depending on, again, whether there's funding, and, and it's identified directly in the job description, so. But I do know that from Superintendent Urin's circumstances, with what they've already seen, there's such a, a massive need in their school, that that's exactly what they need right now, and so I, I think that they're fairly committed at this point, and am I correct there? Okay, all right. So we, we've had discussions, we've had both David Snyder from the school district as their finance person, and Rudy Rodriguez, and Jason Little, myself. I know that, I think Stephanie was part, yeah, Stephanie was part of that, and so as, as their principal individual. And so we've all been in discussions with it, and we've kind of gone back and forth, and then finally, we were able to get the job description formulated to the preciseness that it needed to be for both agencies, and predominantly, we would take on this responsibility of hiring and then actually bringing forth the job description for our purposes, and then they would also work for them under their, their needs very specifically also, so it works out fairly well, and so.
And, okay, and due to our freezing of positions, as I understand it, Hezekiah Allen is actually doing more than one job right now.
That's correct. That is correct. That's why freeing him from the youth commission would really help in that capacity and what he's doing.
That takes quite a bit of time, I think.
It does, it really does.
And it is something that the council has asked you to do is-
Yes.
-accommodate the youth commission, because we feel that that commission's very important to our youth in the community.
That's correct, and then with this position too, working directly with youth, and, and so we felt that it, it would work very well in the status quo, so.
Yeah, and I think that's a big part of the recreation center's objective is, is making sure that youth have the kinds of programs that we need to provide services to them and a healthy community all the way around.
Right, exactly, and then hopefully, what we'll see here is, is what's been identified is that, you know, our, our hope is, is that the program and the opportunities grow under this position also, with this person being in a full-time capacity, part-time with us and part-time with the school, that be helping out and assisting both, but hopefully, our programs will start to grow, because people will know this person and, and feel more comfortable as well, and then we can also maybe get more program management out of the individual too, and that's always a good thing.
Right, well, collaborations are good, I think.
It's a great effort, and a great thing within communities, and we've seen that always in the past, because collaboration is essential.
Council, comments? Any comments from the public on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the creation of a new full-time position within the Parks and Recreation Department contingent on the development and approval of an agreement with the Cottonwood Oak Creek Elementary School District, which provides for a joint funding and sharing of that position.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion, Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council, very much.
Thank you. Item number seven, request from the Arizona Stronghold Vineyards for waiver of Section nine point one two point oh three oh A alcoholic beverages of the municipal code in order to serve and sell wine at the Old Town Activity Park for an event scheduled for August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. And is Jimenez, is she, are you going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got Mr. Ovy? Yeah, Justin Ovy.
Justin Ovy?
Activities coordinator for Arizona Stronghold.
Okay, and is it J-U-S-T-I-N-O-V-Y?
O-V-E.
O-V-E, okay, for the record.
Yeah, basically, we've received a request. They want to hold an event in Old Town Activity Park, which is basically a movie night, and part of the movie night, they would like to sell wine. As you know, it's in violation of the municipal code for to sell or serve wine in any city park. So basically, what they're looking for tonight is an exception to the municipal code subject to, if they get approved for a license from the Arizona Department of Liquor. And if you have any questions, I would direct them towards Mr. Ovy.
Okay, so did you want to add any comments to this?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
So how does this, how will this license benefit the citizens of Cottonwood?
Just by bringing people to that area. That's the reason why initially, we were looking at putting it at Riverfront Park, because we had a license approved there before to serve alcohol. Last year, we put on a disc golf tournament there. But we thought it'd be better to have a little closer to town, like right next to those businesses right there, encouraging people to, you know, go out to dinner before the movie there. And this would go out to basically our wine club is, is who mostly would show up to this, and these are Phoenix-based residents and people out of Flagstaff coming, hopefully, for one or two nights to Cottonwood, and.
Okay, so how late would this last, because there are no lights at that park?
It would go basically from like dusk dark until the movie ended. So you're looking at, you know, about, about two hours after dark, so ten-thirty. But I think I put in the request that we would stop serving alcohol before that. I don't know how you feel about it, really, about serving alcohol late. I think we could stop serving at like nine PM, nine-thirty, something like that.
Mr. Ilinski?
It seems, I'm sorry.
Did, okay, Mr. Ilinski?
It seems like in the packet I read, we have granted these exceptions in the past. It doesn't seem like it's too far out of line from that. I think it'd be a nice benefit to Old Town.
And it would be drawing tourism into Old Town, which is one of our main goals.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Howdy.
So you said, is, so is it in your proposal, the hours that you're going to be serving the liquor? serving the liquor or not?
It is. It's for, I believe I put 6:00 PM to 9:30 PM.
That's what's in here.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what I would...
You want to read my iPad?
Wine, wine sales.
So much fun. Thank you.
And that's with this.
If you go like this, you could make the print bigger.
Yeah.
I'm just teasing you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Hagee, you could also put that in the motion, so that your approval is, is specific to those, those times.
Well, actually, I mean, I was thinking, if they get approved till 10 o'clock, I mean, it wouldn't be a real big problem, as, as far as I see it, so.
That's kind of what I was hoping, was to get a feel for how the council felt about it, you know, since we've never done it in that park before.
I think 10 sounds reasonable. Mr. Hadig.
Okay. Would you like me to make that motion?
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Yes, Mr. Hadig, please make the motion.
Thank you. It says, "I move to waive Section 9.12.030A of the municipal code to allow Arizona Stronghold Vineyards to serve and sell wine at the Old Town Activity Park on August 25, 2012, subject to the approval of the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing and Control and being allowed to serve till 10 o'clock in the evening."
Second. Councilmember Hadig made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number eight, consideration of a request by Sedona Verde Valley Pride for waiver of Section 9.12.030A alcoholic beverages of the municipal code in order to serve and sell beer and wine at the Old Town Activity Park for an event scheduled for September 29, 2012. Okay, any question we have with us today? Name, please.
Greg Lucky, L-U-C-K-E-Y. I'm president of Sedona Pride.
L-U-C-K-E-Y, okay. Okay, so Matt, Mr. McLean?
This is basically the same one as the last one. They want to have an event at Old Town Activity Park on September 29, and they are hoping to serve wine and beer at that event. So if you have any questions, I would refer them to Mr. Lucky.
Okay. Any questions from members of the council?
I just have a question, just, so what is the Sedona Verde Valley Pride?
It's the Sedona Verde Valley LGBT Community Game Pride Association.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, we, this will be our fourth annual festival, having great difficulty finding venues that are appropriate in Sedona. Old Town is all the, you know, Arizona Stronghold, Pillsbury, Riot, Red Brewster, we've gotten great support, and we're just looking to, to bring, as you said, a great new activity and event, you know, to the Old Town District.
And so is the same with the other venue, you would be drawing from folks from all over the area to...
Our anticipated attendance would be 500 to 600, festival hours are 11 to 6, so not conflicting into the evening hours with the local residents down there.
Okay.
And we already have a temporary use permit application into planning and zoning, liquor license applications there. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit as well.
Any comments from the public on this item? If not, do I, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Dowling?
I'd like to make the motion. Let me get back to my page here. Okay. Just wanted to say that having a family member who's a part of that community, it's appreciated. Thank you. Okay, I move to waive Section 9.12.030A of the municipal code to allow Sedona Verde Valley Pride to serve and sell beer and wine at the Old Town Activity Park on September 29, 2012, subject to approval by the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second. Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number nine, authorizing the city attorney to represent the city at the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control Board hearing scheduled for August 2, 2012 regarding the sampling privilege liquor license application submitted by the Don Smoke Shop and recommended for denial by the city council. Mr. Horton?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you'll recall, in, in April, we received notice from the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, as, as we always do when applications are submitted concerning our community. This time, the Don Smoke Shop was the applicant and asked for what's called a sampling privilege. At the time, there were some issues with some bath salt-like substances, I think maybe it was eight ball or glass cleaner or, or all of the above, but some concerns that those substances, and, and as you know, we, we, right around that time, regulated those substances for sale in the city. But there was a concern that they were being vended out of there, and I believe based on that, the, the council recommended denial of that application. We subsequently came to learn that the facility appears to be categorically disqualified for a sampling privilege because of the square footage, the footprint requirement for that particular kind of permission. You know, there's, there's never any guarantees, but it certainly seems to us, unless we're reading that, that requirement wrong and the department itself, there's a board that's gonna hear this, but also the department has lodged its own objection based on that, what we believe to be categorical disqualification. That said, the city received notice that there's a hearing set in this matter, so the question for council is, you know, a, a natural person can represent him or herself before the board, a corporation, the city's a municipal corporation, can only be represented by an attorney. So if the council wants the city to be represented at this hearing, I guess that would be me. So the question for council is, do you want me to attend that hearing and, and speak to these concerns of the city council, or do we want to let what we believe to be the, the disqualifying square footage of the facility speak and operate for itself? I guess, I'm happy to go down. I've, I've got more than enough to do without going down, but it's, it's entirely up to the council whether you want to be represented down there that day.
Mr. Ilinski?
I personally feel strongly that they won't get their approval. You're a busy guy, it's hot in Phoenix, I mean, you know, I, if they do get their approval, what happens then? I mean, is there, that's it? They can go forward with their...
Correct. The, the city, the city has weighed in pursuant to the, to the request for the city's input. Now there's a hearing scheduled, then the city's input once again has been invited as an interested party.
But, yes, Mr. Bartosz.
I'll also share that I have it on very good authority that their lease expires, I think, September, October, November, somewhere around there, and it will not be renewed. So, yeah, they, they probably won't be in that facility too much longer.
And considering that no matter what we say, they do as they please anyway, I would, I guess, advise you to use your time in the most expeditious way, and that might not be the best way to be using your time.
I think that may be right, especially in light of the lease issue. They may have abandoned the application without notifying the department, they may not have abandoned the application formally, and they may simply not show up. There's, it's very, it's unlikely, but nothing's impossible, that, that that application would be granted even if we were not represented.
So if they were granted the, the privilege for the sampling of, of the liquor, is that transferable?
That's what I was thinking.
In other words, if they're not gonna be at that building, there's nothing that, that's gonna stop them from pursuing another building?
They would have to go back to liquor control to transfer the location to, transfer the location.
Because the building footprint seems to be a big issue.
I think it's both personal to the applicant and site-specific.
Okay. Personally, I don't know, I, I would rather see you go down there, other than the fact that maybe you could call and see if it's still on, if they have responded or abandoned their, their application or whatever, and save a trip. But like you said, anything can happen, so.
And if council authorizes me to go, that I would certainly check to see it's still on the docket, at, at least the day before, before I took the trip.
Will, will they talk to you when you're down there? Will you, they ask you questions? Are you just gonna be a body in the room?
Under the hearing procedures, all interested parties are, are entitled to be heard.
So I think that we're saying that suit yourself. If you feel that you need to be there after you call and ask them questions, you're certainly welcome to spend your time that way, but if you feel that your time would be more well-spent doing your other many thousands of 60 or 70 hours a week on your job, then, you know...
Madam Mayor, yeah, unless the council, I think, directs me to, to go there, I, I think my choice will be, under the circumstances, to trust to the circumstances.
So I think the direction is, is that give them a call and then make up, you're, make your decision based on that. And if you're not there, like I said, in the past, we made recommendations and they didn't take them, and I'm not sure that they would take our recommendation this time, and so, you know, your time is very valuable.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
It's gonna be the liquor board, not, not the people from the Don's.
Pardon me?
He's gonna be addressing the liquor board.
Exactly, right. And the liquor board doesn't always, I guess, you weren't on council, but we made a recommendation that they did not follow.
Oh, 'cause I never had that happen during my, my time.
Bootleggers, wasn't it, the one across from Verde Lake?
Okay. That's what you get for leaving for a while.
See what happens when you're gone.
Okay, good. Are we ready to adjourn?
Okay, so claims and adjustments. I move to pay the claims.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then we adjourn?
Okay, I second. Councilmember Norman made the motion, the mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.